It started, Kelly, you're at first and you're going to talk to us about Farmer's Market location. Um, it might be better easier for everybody that might be in Zoom to see you if you're up.
So that's, I think, just a little some videos for Zoom books, but I have some paper copies. Well, thanks, um, thanks for having me here to talk about Farmer's Market. I don't need to talk about it enough, obviously. But forever, um, but seriously, I really keep it on the agenda. Um, there's a lot going on with the market. We've grown so much in so many ways in the organization for the last several years and with that comes a lot of awareness and kind of to reflect and grow further. So, we have just put out a community survey, which some of you may have seen already on this subject, but if we're to, yeah, moving forward, I want to share it all with the council. Be on a team with the city on it. So I just wanted to start, and I have like five minutes of things to share with you, but I really want to make sure that it's focused on getting your feedback with us. So we dive in. Marcus has been facing some real challenges. For starters, and you can see in the exhibits I just handed you, exhibit A, you can see our sales percent starting at 2016. So each of those years is compared to 2016 there as a percentage increase or decrease. Um, and currently you compared our most recent sales year in 2022 to 2016, which is our earliest data, then you're looking at a 2% decrease in overall market sales, which is not think original. Uh, and none of the years in between have been particularly outstanding either. There's also a green line in that exhibit A that is farmer sales specifically, and it's even flatter. So I mean, everyone's been around for a few years. You all know that the market has tried to find a lot of different things, locations, um, and a lot of efforts and outreach to improve that. But when we compare it to sort of our physically nearest market peers, which is farming apart, that exhibit B sales, and they're these two maps or these two graphs are on the exact same scale of the 200% of the power. I think it's a big stark visual difference in how their sales have performed over the last seven years compared to the farmers markets. So we know that there's something really different going on there. Uh, in addition to just, just the sheer difference in sales and the lack of increasing sales that we've seen, we have generally pretty low attendance. And we had definitely like a boom in COVID years of attendance, just the sheer number of people who were in town and needed something to do outside. So we saw that, but it has not continued. It hasn't pelted on. And because of that, we're actually struggling to attract new vendors that people really want. Like they want to see cheeses and jams and breads and sweet treats and all the fun stuff and donuts that they haven't tasted. We can't attract those vendors right now. They just aren't interested in a small market. But we're also retaining growth, struggling to retain vendors. Many people loved Oh Yeah Farms and they've gone out of the business. Partially, they started with their initial move being to not be at the level market and because it wasn't making enough money for them and it's not making enough money for everyone now. Our current location also struggles with no visibility from the thoroughfare of town. Even locals tell us console that they were definite of exists. And our schedule is a real problem for the evenings, the afternoons, and our summers are unbearable sometimes. And we've actually had to cancel markets to defeat. Vendors end up in a truck on those days. The time day is also just inconvenient for families with older kids. People who work in like a lot of different industries can't do that time day either for many reasons. And then also we've heard from a lot of seniors, it's not good for them either. And then finally, the location on grass, because the space that we're in right now is inconvenient for vendors for setup and cleanup. They have to pull a lot of stuff in and out. And then we also get constant complaints about ADA accessibility being on grass. And we've always, that's been, that's been a factor forever. So as we, you know, put all those things together in our brains this year, uh, we've started sets of goals for 2024 and things that we really need to focus on when we visualize what that looks like for us. And so there's two concepts. One is the location concept needs to be improved. We need to find somewhere that has pavement. We know that pavement is hotter, but the setup and the logistics and the accessibility are so much better. We also need to have better visibility from Highway two, and we need to have better sales potential overall. And then the physical and then the schedule of the location for the market needs to be changed somehow in order to have lower temperatures that are more comfortable for both people to produce. Produce is not pulled up in the afternoons. And then you remind yourself that the market sets up two hours before it sets up to sitting out and being sad for a few hours already. We also need to implement a schedule of the market and we need to attract new vendors to support our vendors. So we have a couple of ideas. Um, this is, you know, not a recent concept. We've been thinking about it for a while. Uh, one idea is that we be down on Front Street on a Saturday or Sunday morning, like early nine to one. Or that would be in a city parking lot. We identified potentially the P one parking lot as being an option on either Saturday or Sunday morning from nine to one. Uh, if you want to reference which parking lot that is, have that in exhibit C. Um, and then I want to share a few benefits that we see before I front all of the questions. So for benefits of the city, I see an opportunity for collaboration that we're always talking about and that I always hear about the city wanting to collaborate more with local and public organizations. I think that's, we're really interested in collaborating with you. So hopefully that's appealing to the city as well. I think this would add, having the, the market in town somewhere would add an authentic experience for visitors. Posting this downtown event that is really a benefit to residents would hopefully help bridge the divide between residents and tourism needs. Uh, the market downtown shows the city's support for local farmers and it displays our valley's really rich agricultural roots and the apple capital of the world. We should be putting that on display and celebrating and sharing with our visitors. And then the market would downtown would show that the city is meant for and welcome to everyone, to residents, visitors, farmers, artisans, musicians, everything that the market brings to the table is welcome in downtown. It's made for those people. It's, I really see the market as a, as a beach celebration of who left more of this and where we're coming from. And then we also have fabulous stories of how vendors, uh, end up contributing to our city. Like my favorite one is Russell Punk. Um, he started at the market and now he is a absolute favorite in downtown, the business community. There's also benefits to those businesses, uh, to the brick and mortars for having the market downtown. Uh, if I were a brick and mortar business, I would be thrilled that there's something going on earlier in the morning on the weekends when I've heard that it's and it makes sense to me that it is because there's something going on usually. So hopefully we can increase morning business for them. And it's outside of, you know, it's like a conflict with primary business hours. It adds another layer of authenticity to the very experience. Troy likes to say that he's layering the experience of all the different things that visitors can do in our town. And it hopefully will bring more residents into downtown as well. Plus, if they're having a vibrant market in your city, in your town, really anywhere, but especially if it's near those businesses, you're going to see connections between restaurants and local farms because the owner is going to be on his way into the restaurant that morning and walk through the farmer's market and see what is available today. What's in the field today in that area? And how do I get that beautiful product in my kitchen? And then we're probably going to see something similar to the cheese and all the other types of art that we like to share in our town with our visitors. And then finally, I see a ton of benefits to residents. And I know these, I, we've already got 130 responses. So believe me, I know that there's a lot of problems that residents see as well, but I see so many benefits. First of all, having a vibrant market that actually attracts those types of vendors I mentioned, like we all want cheese and bread. We want them, but we can't get them yet. Morning temperatures are just more comfortable for being out there for shopping. Your produce is going to look better. The market is going to be harder to forget if it's right here basically downtown. Parking is generally better before 10:00 AM. I know that, you know, we have had many locations at the market. Parking's been great in some of them. Parking's been not great in some of them. It hasn't affected sales at all, but it's a concern always. Uh, and I think it's easier to park before 10:00 AM on Saturday than it is at 4:00 PM on Thursday. And it makes our rally more attractive to the farmers looking to establish new farms. I think seeing more is always better in the market world. Look at Seattle, I think, maybe look at every city. More is better in the cities that have a lot of markets on Saturdays. Lots of farmers flock together. ADA accessibility is going to be hugely, hugely improved no matter where we live, as long as we're on pavement. And the market, you know, the favorite point is just that we could probably run down the street if we're on a school ground. Okay, ready, psycho? What do you got for me?
What's your plan to build, uh, consumers? And is that part of it having on the weekend? Because the thing that always blew my mind that you weren't, that we're not that profitable. And I was the president of the farmer's market for two years. And I wasn't too worried about vendors because they would show up if we brought more consumers. So how do we tap into the tourism market of Leavenworth and that would be a weekend market? And I pushed really hard for it, but they wanted to stay on Thursdays because they were worried about the cashmere market, which really doesn't have a big tourist economy. So that was one of the big things. And we also proposed the downtown market, which at the time wasn't really feasible, but I'm glad you're bringing it to the front. So do you have a plan to build more consumers? Because ultimately that's going to change your graph, not vendors.
Yeah. I mean, I think, you know, we, we have a, you know, a captive audience downtown on a Saturday morning, but the visibility alone, I think, will build consumers to be able to be aiming places for what people run into. And they cannot avoid seeing it if they're visiting town. It's really targeting that goal. And that exposure will hopefully transcend to, to the locals as well because many people are moving to the valley and to our town all the time. And we were building these enormous complexes that are housing new people and they don't even know that the market exists because they don't drive into the neighborhood. So I'm hopeful that visibility will be the, the way forward for having more.
Okay. Kelly, what does, what does cashmere do? Is it downtown, street, where do they put their farmer's market?
Yeah, Hager is currently located in, uh, the museums. Just like a park next to the museum down there and near Martin's Market. It's on the street. It's a smaller market. It is on Sundays. Uh, it is highly focused on local tourism and it is a newer, or not local tourism, on local residents. And it is a newer market. So we focus that way too. And our residents got us to where we are today. So, and I don't know that everyone knows that we also run the cashmere market. So our goal there is to establish the resident following and then we can do the same thing and evaluate whether it's a bigger, more prominent location. But we have pretty good visibility here.
So they like, are they down by Martins or?
Kind of near Martins. Yeah. There's like a green space between Rusty's and the museum they're in.
Oh, kind of in that park. Okay. That's where they're at.
Kelly, I have a question for you. How many vendors do you have?
I'd average around 20 to 25.
And how many of those are food versus?
Uh, produce or grocery goods, if you want to just blanket statement grocery goods. Um, the percentage, I don't know off the top of my head, but every day I have eight to 10 of those, or maybe half. The sales percentage is much higher and that's the reason for the market. So we always maintain and we always have to maintain. This is something that some people have been concerned about. With this move, it's like, oh, you're going to just become a craft market. But in order to be called a farmer's market and to be a member of the market association in the city of Washington, we have to maintain that proportion of sales anyways. So that will not be changed.
I, I probably like everybody else. I see an issue with it being on Front Street on Saturday because you know, by 10 o'clock, you got restaurants going now. You have people, you got the carriage. But.
What about the west end of town by Gustav's?
Eighth Street looks good to me or the west end of town. Because you get the buildings in the shade, so it's not as hot. You have the pavilion or the plaza there by the restrooms. And since you only have 20 vendors.
I mean, the, the whole would need to attract twice as much. We'd like to be a
Exactly. Well, then, then you just turn the corner there, but.
Did you say Eighth Street?
I said Eighth Street, no.
I believe that is currently.
Is that going to be the turn?
Well, that's currently where all of the delivery trucks will live.
Yeah, on Saturdays. Yeah.
I think that there's some potential on the west end of Front Street where it's closed. Yeah, done by Yodelin and but done by Gustav's. There's been some businesses who have expressed some concern with the closing of the street because there's less foot traffic there. And I think that the farmer's market could help drive tourist traffic and community traffic up there.
We did do the winter market there. We have some idea about that with like logistically. And we did brainstorm a little bit around that with the city. I think there's um, there's positives to that. There's no matter where on Front Street we're talking about. And I mean, including Park Lot, like all along there, there's going to be buses and buses.
So go ahead. Sorry.
Oh, no, I was just going to say the, the struggle that we found with that particular location is the current width of the street. We wouldn't be able to have vendors on both sides. So and it just isn't as cheap currently. Not sensing.
There are SUVs that they have give away both sides of the street.
Down further. Yeah. And I think, you know, we're, we're looking forward and we would be, we try to be flexible, but it was just, it is already a wider space, even considering that SUVs down there.
So because, you know, back in the late sixties, early seventies, Arden Park was started for the reason to bring the people off the height. Just to get them from there, 30 feet over, so that they could see something happening. Yeah.
Yeah.
So yours is the reverse of that, but.
Kind of. Yeah. In a way, when I, when I touch the, the current audience, but again, bigger, bigger and more, more is always good.
Yeah.
Arden Park feels like they would be bringing more people to their.
There's issues with the parking lot.
With the P one.
Yes, because it's a paid parking lot. So it has a parking ordinance that goes with it. So you can't just sit there and go. It happened. Yeah.
Right. No, of course. And we worked out numbers on that to determine if it would even be logistically feasible or financially useful for the market to rent the place out of.
Yeah, but it's a hard parking lot. And realistically, I mean, if you want to bring it back to people who've been doing farmer's markets for hundreds of years in Germany, I was recently there. They have them in the middle of downtown in the most, the most high profile areas because that's where people want them. I mean, it really comes down to the people of Leavenworth. Where do they want it? They want it right downtown on the grass in the most and where you can get, make the most money attracting the most tourists to come to your market, right in the grass and the green space in the center of town, which is where all Europeans do their farmer's market. And they don't have a problem cleaning up. They don't have a problem with logistics. They've been doing it for longer than white man has been in this area.
And they're a lot more.
Yeah, trading court.
I mean, did you think that's, you bring up a really attractive aspect of Front Street compared to the parking lot, and that is maintaining a, a grassy seating area in the shade for locals. Yeah.
What about during the week in the morning? Because it is dead downtown in the week.
Yeah. I mean.
That's not great for tourists.
We're trying to solve the problems of not having a lot of sales and not having enough. Essentially what we're learning is that we don't have enough locals to support.
Yes.
Well, we're not capturing them well enough. It's one of those two things. And they've told us that they have scheduling conflicts in the evening on their stays. And they've, they've told us that they want more products. And in order to, to hit those two targets alone, I just don't see how a weekday morning it resolves scheduling conflicts or being more attractive to vendors.
You ever been to the one in Port Council? The one in Uptown? Yeah. Cause it's a mile away from downtown.
True.
And it's packed, but they marketed it.
Marketing is.
Yeah. And I'm not saying it needs to be.
And we've tried so hard. I mean, I can, can honestly say that I have busted my butt.
Sure.
In marketing. Um, and it's just not working yet. I like, I like to use the example of the Twist Market. Anyone's been, um, it is front center. It is the most sleep pack market I have ever been to. Uh, frankly, no rules, but they are on the thoroughfare. You cannot get there if you're driving through that town. And it is bussing. It's huge. And they are attractive from miles and miles around. No other parks in their valley can even.
Yep.
So it's just captive audience.
Uh, in a previous community, and it was a much bigger spot, but, um, it was located actually on a parking lot. Is there any chance, have you talked to the people on this side next to Ketchmore Valley Bank?
Link?
About, yeah, about using that in the morning on a weekend for, um, because you're still, you're on, you're visible from the highway. You're, you get downtown, we'll see you, but you also are on the side with a lot of residential and could walk to it. So I don't know if that's been approached, but like I said, a previous community, I know they did it.
Yeah. I guess my question in response to that is why, why do you see that being a better option than being right across the street from the P one lot? Just because it's not.
Because it's a paid parking lot that's closer to the downtown businesses than.
They're just as much parking and I'm willing to pay for it.
Oh, really?
We worked out the numbers. I can get lodging tax money if I needed to, to cover the hours of the market is at that lot.
Right. I think your best profile is right downtown. I honestly think the city should be honored and privileged to invite the farmer's markets as a, as a centerpiece to represent who we are as a community.
Are you thinking like, are you thinking maybe the grassy spot from the gazebo where the kids go sledding to that part?
Yeah, potentially. I mean, really super flexible. If we're down in there, wherever we fit.
Where would that, would that work? That grassy spot?
That space would, it would say, you wouldn't want to be too much in the grass with our tents because we want that to be at least preserved somehow for the, the hangout area.
Yeah.
Um, and it's easier set up on the pavement. But yeah, that end of town, I think seems like there's plenty of space on there. We could also think that in the vision that is like a big open area between like Rhine House and Eighth Street. Eventually maybe that, just like general area would be big enough for the market.
Yeah, take up the whole road. I mean, that's what they do in Germany. They take up the whole centers. Yeah.
We have.
First apartment should get around everything.
But you got deliveries on, on Front Street. I mean.
You got a lot of things.
Did we already talk about the space where Arden Park occupies, just on a different, because they've set up Thursday night?
Uh, they occupy it a lot. They're open from Thursday through sometimes on Mondays and the stuff is there the whole time.
Yeah. So what about one of the non-Thursday through Sunday nights? That's less than ideal.
They want a weekend.
They want a weekend to get tourists.
Which is exactly what you want.
Yeah, I see the vision with our, that our parks use, which is more is always better. If we're next to them and we've got, it looks like we have eight tents, like yes, that looks like a thing at Farmers.
It's complimentary.
Yes. They go really well together because Arden Park does have a different style of vendor. And that's.
Do you have a study session?
One of the breaks I was in last summer, I think it was Penticton. That's what they had was right down the middle of the street. And as a visitor, like, you know, Saturday, Sunday, um, I probably wouldn't be buying a bunch of vegetables, but the other items I would be really interested in. I walked down to do that, but they had closed, they closed like at one or 12 or one or something like that. So I didn't get a chance to browse through and see what was there, but
Right. Yeah.
Would have gone. Yeah.
It would be, if it could last all day, but I can pretty much only stay open as long as the.
That's it. Yeah.
So we go from nine till five, you know, very much time. What happens really is the same, that's right, that's offline. Do you have any problems you need to put your vehicles in it?
I think that's the, that for me is the biggest. Absolutely. And, um, and we've talked about. Tell me a little bit and she makes a big term maybe you know.
But the carriage changes throughout the week.
But it's working in like every other city in the world that you would figure it out.
I'll sort of echo that point. Um, so I was in a, I lived nowhere else where it was literally, it was on this, was on the primary through fair of the street and it was a community event every single time and music was added and people would go to the restaurants and hang out and we would call it watching the parade because you would just see everybody and we was doing their thing. And if I thought yeah, oh yes, you know, it's not. Um, so yeah, I mean, and you know, I've spoken, I knew I just, or I, I'm a new homeowner. I just moved uh, price back here in town. But yeah, I mean, I went to the farmer's market because my person's kid was selling like crafts and it's like, and it was cute, but it's also not really an adult farmer's market. It's not really a farmer's market experience. It was kind of like like I, I couldn't go there and get reliable produce that I would want.
Right.
And, you know, I do think that a combination of, you know, people selling souvenir type of things. Um, and, you know, except for tourists. And I, I think there's a, a lot of good thoughts here. Yeah.
I agree. And I know you don't have a shot of time off probably, but.
Have you spoken with Arden the Park about partnership?
Like a, some more formal collaboration?
Perhaps expansion of the footprint and you guys share costs?
I mean, I think all of us on the table, Kelly and I have been on this for a long time and she thinks, she's a really big fan of having us nearby. So, yeah. She's also a Cali holder.
Yes.
She's definitely another Cali and the other Cali. Got three Calis. So Kelly, can I ask one more time about the east side, like Yodelin, Little Red's, west side, sorry, west side of town, the, that strip, even if you were to do one long banner of tents, one long banner of, um, vendors. Because that area has ample room for pedestrians. It is sort of a funnel for a lot of our visitors. Parking's going to be challenging anywhere. It's definitely not ideal where you are now. That's my neighborhood. It's
Yeah.
Not ideal.
People are currently more capable, I believe.
Yeah. So it's not a big deal. Um, and we're not accommodating, well, we're accommodating some parking with our lots, but.
Loading and unloading would be easier on the west end of town.
If you had a lane open for travel for loading and unloading.
Well, even just on the highway, there's loading and unloading right across from that private parking lot. Um, and there can also be the use of the turn lane, which is no longer used for loading and unloading.
If you had a big enough presence at the very end, very west end of, of, uh, Front Street, it would be a feeling.
Yeah. Yeah.
That area, we've heard from a few businesses since the closure that they're, I think Andrew said that, that there's not enough traffic up there. And they wish there's more draw. And I know Troy's thought a lot about that. I think they did some, some of the lighting activities where they intentionally staged things up there.
Totally. Yeah. I mean, we, we heard a lot on that. So we tried out a little bit of it over there. That was also a drop for them. So I mean, yeah, I think it's, it's probably just as feasible. Um, I do want to make sure that whatever we, whatever people you know, come to is or is with like the, the long range in mind. And so I know that lots of changes are coming to Front Street.
Yeah.
Or even down by Icicle and Festival.
But I think if you brought it downtown, it would have manifold effect over the rest of downtown. It would like radiate people everywhere. So in effect, you're basically, what accomplishes what you're talking about? Getting people to different areas. Granted, you know, like lighting, Christmas lighting brings everyone downtown, but it and it diffuses people everywhere downtown. So, you know, they go to the market and let's say your, your, um, food vendor, the the lady who sells the dumplings, she's full, like long line. There's a ton of restaurants for them to go to. They're there anyway. They're going to have manifold side benefit to the restaurants, to everywhere else down. So it's going to get the community more downtown than normal now. Cause I gotta say, I frankly don't go downtown.
Kelly, what if you split it between the west end and that grassy area? Between the gazebo and Ninth Street? I mean, what if you took both areas?
Yeah, everything's on the table. Our customer survey just says downtown.
I think the grass here is really appealing. The grass here is pretty cool because you're right. You really are downtown.
Really sorry for being late. Did, did, did the chamber weigh in officially or unofficially on your alternatives?
I don't know if they've weighed in anything officially. Um, Troy's just a big fan of having the market be part of the tourism happening.
And you were considering talking to the chamber board, right? Wasn't that kind of?
Yeah. They asked me if they would come and chat with the third exceeding. So I'll probably be doing that.
Okay. And the music would be at the gazebo downtown. Yeah, perfect. Because it's a great venue for them.
Yes. And we were actually, already songs is that. So we probably partner on that.
And they'll help you market and advertise using logic text. That's great. That's what we need.
All right. Well, that sounds like there's some support. We can talk about this at another time when there's a little more no trust.
Yeah.
Reclusions, but yeah, we'll need to move on for now. And thank yous.
Thank you.
We look forward to collaborating with you, Kelly.
I really appreciate that. Um, I would say that the labor of love you put into the market.
Thank you.
It's a lot of work.
All right. Moving on, we've got Lilith who's gonna help us with some basically zoning.
Oh.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members. Um, you had requested inclusionary zoning. I know we've talked about this in the past and your packet includes a handout from MRSC as well as some. Uh. State law is in there as well as an example from the city of Isawak. Um, but in your previous packet, I had also provided a example of what we've already adopted. So. In the interest of educating the public and the council members on how to use our website, I'm gonna show you where it is. Under Departments, Community Development. And you can scroll down to. Regulations quote codes and planning documents. And then once you're in there. Just opportunity for me to show off what we already have, which is official zoning map. Uh, as a reminder, we do have an interactive GIS map that has multiple layers, including zoning. We encourage realtors to use this and just general public so they can get a feel of what their zoning is and what that means with the codes. And then we have the level one municipal code here, the shoreline master program. Comprehensive plan, downtown plan and, and some other planning documents. So this is a good place to go. To get to the level one municipal code. Once you're in there. You can work your way through the chapters. To your specific titles, to your specific chapters and type, um, sections of code. Eighteen forty-two is the affordable low income housing incentive. This is inclusionary zoning. It's just not mandatory. And what I'm hearing the city council say they'd like to have and what we've talked about on the planning commission docket is a mandatory. Inclusionary housing program. And the handout in your packet. Uh, talks about what mostly about mandatory requirement. And I wanted to pull out a couple of things. Uh, mostly the conclusion says you should carefully review the pros and cons of inclusionary zoning before implementing such a program. Um, but if you have an affordable housing program and strong demand for housing market, it's a regular. Tori tool you should consider. Um, the stronger your housing market, in other words, the higher land values. And the desire for more density, then this program is gonna be a better fit because builders. Uh, get a increased density with this program to offset their cost of building those extra units. So that's part of how the program works. They provide. The required lower income housing. But they also get a greater density to offset those additional units. Um, we also get to decide with this program. How many years? It is affordable. For our existing program, we adopted. Low income renter and low income household thresholds. That's at the beginning there. Um, we put in a section that talks about the other housing funds. Um, funds and programs available for housing to encourage housing. And then this is our incentive table. But as far as the length and duration, when this came before the city council, the discussion was we wanted to make it. Require it permanent indefinitely. And so that's how this is drafted. I believe the planning commission had brought it to the city council with a recommendation of fifty years. Which is more of the standard. Um. So that might be something, if we do a mandatory one, we wanna reexamine because it affects. A developer's willingness to participate in such a program. Um, they typically want it to sunset at some point. So that they can. Update the units and get the most current market rate for them at that point in time. Or quite often, a lot of them have an option where. The first right of refusal at that end of the mandatory lower income housing. Say fifty years. That first right of refusal goes to the housing authority. So the housing authority has an option to buy it. If they decide not to buy it and retain it as long-term low income housing, then it can convert to. Regular market housing and the developer can update it and. Bring it onto the market if they want. Uh, the pros are also listed in your article on from the MRSC. The pros for. Mandatory inclusionary zoning are the production of more affordable, low and moderate income units. Um. Inclusionary, it says here in the article, and excuse me for reading, but I just wanna make sure we hit the high points. Inclusionary zoning can also result in buildings and neighborhoods that have a mix of income levels. Without having to rely on taxpayer funds to provide them. So. Those are the two biggest pros. One, you do get some housing. Two, you don't have to rely on taxpayer. And maybe three is a pro as you get more mixed neighborhood. The cons that are listed in the article, um, is that it can be difficult to administer and you have to. Periodically, maybe annually. Uh, track each unit, make sure it's still being utilized as it was intended. Rented as lower income, so kind of an audit, a regular ongoing audit. We find that's gonna be a case with multifamily tax exemption as well. Uh, the second con that is raised in the article is that sometimes. These type of regulations rise. Bring out concerns about change in neighborhood character. And I think the city council's very well familiar with those concerns with the other codes that we've adopted. Um, the other con that they wanted to bring out in the article. Is that if your housing market is not strong enough. Developers will opt out. Um, the programs require an opt-out option. I'll verify with legal, but I think they require that they could buy into a housing program or do this. I need to run that through Tom Grasser, but it seems like that's a required element. I see it in the RCW as well. Um. So they may just opt out as opposed to building. So that's another con. If your housing market isn't strong enough or your density incentives aren't high enough. And it doesn't pencil for them. Um, and, and a similar note, they may not build to that extent. They'll build just under the threshold that the city defines and. So that, that is another way of skirting the regulation. So. With that introduction of the program and a quick overview of the pros and cons, I can pause right now for any questions or discussion and I. Will stop sharing screen. So I can see you better. Um. Are there any questions? On what?
Yeah, I have a question, um. When they have to have a, this is a mandatory thing, so does this apply all the time for everybody or can you? Can the city say in this case, yes, in this case, no, or is it just like a blanket mandatory thing?
Well, the city would define the number of units that it would apply to, so. If we chose five or more units. Um, we probably would be promoting four plexes. Right? Um, if we chose, uh, you know, bigger cities choose like a hundred or more units, you're required to have ten percent, uh. That's, that's more typical. But if we chose, you know, twenty units, we don't have a lot of land. That will supply those larger developments. We don't have a ton of multifamily left that isn't gonna be developed. Um. But we have also talked about expanding the UGA and that could still be an option and we can look at zoning. Maybe as a part of this discussion or secondary. And our commercial zones allow for residential. So if we made it mandatory in commercial with any mixed use. Um, one of the incentives there might be parking because that's such a big issue. Um, so difficult to provide, in other words. Uh, so if we provided an incentive that it wasn't needed or at a reduced rate. You know, that would encourage link ridership and other alternative means. So there's lots of little incentives and programs we could throw at it. But once you define the zoning district it goes in and the number of units. That's it. It'll just apply across the board.
To that zone, to those particular zoning areas.
Yes.
Right, you identify the zones first or it's gonna apply.
Okay, and the number of units.
The number of units.
Number of units that kick it off. And then, and then let it though the, the idea that they can opt out and, but they have to buy themselves out and that still goes into your affordable housing fund. So they're either gonna supply. Actual units. Or they're gonna supply again, some dollars that will help you. Put those units somewhere.
Yes.
So you have to have. The opt-out to where if they, uh, choose not, they're choosing not to. It isn't like they could just pass. It means that they have to pay.
Right.
Pay something for that.
Yeah.
That goes and supply the cash flow.
And loop fee.
Loop fee.
And along with that, Lilith, are you done?
Yeah.
Okay, along with that, Lilith, um, is there a legal limit to say, okay, we're gonna ask for ten percent affordable units or could we ask for forty percent? Or five percent? Is there a, a max and a minimum or? Just whatever we want.
Well, it is pretty much whatever you want, but you do need to be mindful of what's marco, marketable, what, what are developers actually gonna utilize?
Mine sort of have a hard time being mindful of Marcos. Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And I, I agree, it has to work in the, in the interest of the market to make sure developers still come in and keep it attractive and. Has to pencil out and all that stuff. I was just curious if there was any legal, um, slot that we had to fit into. Thank you.
Maybe that could be negotiated.
Right, that's a great development. Yeah, and I, that's a great.
Lilith, I got a question for you.
Yes.
So if in a commercial zone, somebody does a mixed use building and there's affordable housing in it. Let's say there's three units. Do those three units pay the higher commercial rate for water?
Well, the water rates are set in a different format, so. That is done based on. What's needed to provide for that utility. So we do a review of all the costs associated with that. That helps us set the rate. We do a review of, uh, improvements that need to happen and that helps us, um. Set the buy-in rate. And Chantel. And Tom, do you correct me if I'm off base here?
So you're in the right direction. I think you know a little more detail than I do, but, uh, as far as Lars concerned, it's about meter size. And then your rate is the size of your meter. Now with commercial accounts, your sewer is charged based on the water use that runs through your meter where residential is a flat rate fee.
So what does that get charged?
Well, it depends on how much water they use because every commercial account's analyzed on a yearly basis and their sewer rates are adjusted yearly.
Yeah, because I'm just trying to figure out what, how, where does it go from affordable to trips over town?
Well, that's a really great program. I mean, a great question because I don't think we can make that one of the incentives, but. It does raise an interesting. Correlation because even the most recent state law is saying that with our accessory dwelling units, we're gonna have to cut. Our, um, connection fees by two fifty percent of a standard connection fee. And so the state's starting to jump in and say, hey, when you have these smaller units, you have to do this. But with the affordable units, I haven't seen that type of correlation. Um, it's, it is based on, the fees are all based on what's needed for that utility. And then it's just based on how your category is within it. Um, great question. I'll, I'll research it.
Yeah, and the sprinkle, uh, kicked in, you have to sprinkle the building because of the unit?
Well, it could help the fire.
Yeah, that's not gonna change.
That might change, okay.
It does sustain it, like occupancy. Yeah.
Right. Other questions?
Um, I was wondering, I circled in several places here. For incentives, um, heights and bulk increases. So can you talk about that?
Well, under the state, uh, law, in order to help incentivize additional units and affordable units, the city has an option. Of allowing for an increase in height. Uh, for a building or a decrease in setbacks, which would be the bulk of the building. And we went through this discussion with the program that we did a, adopt, which was voluntary and, uh, inclusionary zoning. And we ended up doing a slight increase in height for the tourist commercial. Zone. And if you remember, our consultant came in and did a schematic of what that might look like if it was a taller structure there and we did a step back off of the residential neighborhood. So we do have all of that in code already. We can take our existing voluntary regulation. Uh, eighteen twenty-four and we could. Um, rewrite part of that to make it mandatory. Uh, that might be the easiest way to continue to move this program forward without starting from scratch.
So are we at, at all talking about the twice, uh, not twenty-five feet? Um, the heights in the residential area, which was established. Uh, we talked, is, is that, is that a, something that affect the heights of a build of a duplex or whatever would be in a residential zone?
No, no, that's not what we're talking about right now.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Right. I don't, I don't believe this inclusionary zoning right now. Right now, the voluntary program is in the residential, the multifamily and the commercial, so all zones. The mandatory might make more sense just to have in the higher land value areas where demand for development might be higher. So something to talk with a realtor and a developer about in specific details because they might have suggestions about what they find more viable. Does that make sense?
You're talking to me? Um, no, I'll talk to you about it later. So I make sure I'm understanding.
I think she's asking, so we have a thirty-five foot cap on ridge caps in the residential.
The rest of you.
Oh, cutting it off.
Okay.
I, I, I cut my video so I could not break up. Okay, so.
I think what she's asking, Lilith, is the thirty-five foot limit on ridge caps in the residential. If someone was building in the residential with this mandatory, um. Inclusionary zoning thing. Can they, would that ever be changed? Could they modify the thirty-five foot or is that thirty-five foot final? They, they just can't build over thirty-five feet, even if they are doing affordable housing.
Well, in the end, it's all in your guys' hands. Uh, the current voluntary program doesn't allow for the height increase in the residential. And if you wanted to adopt a new program or modify the existing, it's still in your guys' hands. You get to decide that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I guess I'd ask, where's, how do we, what's our next step to initiate this? What else do we need to do?
Well. Let's walk through at our next study session that's available to us, the existing code we have. And I will draft into it. A mandatory component and then we can see what you guys think of that. I like doing that because it's something that's already adopted. So, so if we, if we don't try to open up the whole discussion on height and all the little details. And we're just looking at how to make it mandatory, then hopefully it can actually be a quicker process. So it would be reviewed with you. Still needs to go back to the planning commission because it's part of the zoning chapter.
Mm-hmm.
But. Are you guys open to digging in the weeds that much?
Yep.
Yep. I, I think we're, well, for my part, I've just, I'd like to need new sheets that's. Viable and as effectively as we can, but I certainly wouldn't, I'd like to move it ahead as much as we can, as, as quick as possible. So. So whatever that takes, that's what I'm for.
Okay, so the next open study session, I will have those draft revisions to you. And then we can move to the planning commission.
All right, that sounds great Lilith.
Okay, almost back on time, thank you for your time and suggestions.
Thank you, Lilith.
Thank you.
Hey, we're moving on to the next item is code of ethics, and that's.
Toby. Thank you, Mayor, council members. Um before you for discussion tonight is a draft code of ethics. Um over my year, can you believe it, it's been a year as your city administrator. I've realized this is one thing that our city lacks, and the draft before you was provided by our city attorney. Um I believe it's important to consider for the promotion of public confidence in the integrity of our local government. I won't go through the entire document section by section, but I want to call your attention to section two point two four point three zero. Prohibited conduct, which covers conflicts of interest and avoiding the appearance of a conflict of interest. And section two point two four point five zero ethical standards. Uh one additional point that needs to be codified is the attendance section. And what constitutes an excused absence, because we haven't really discussed that. I've, I've learned that in other cities, if a member's doesn't show up. The council votes, is this an excused absence or not? And if you have more than three unexcused absences. Further action can be taken. So while no council member has missed more than one meeting in a row over the last year, this code will govern all elected officials moving forward, should the council choose to adopt the code. The code then spells out a process for investigating complaints, including hiring a third-party ethics officer to resolve official, uh official complaints. And should the council decide to move forward with this code of ethics, there would be some needed changes to section twenty-one point fifteen point seven zero. The hearing examiner section of the code, as a hearing examiner, would consider an appeal of an ethics officer's decision. And those changes are, are in italics. So if you have any questions or any discussion about this, now would be the time, if you are amenable, then I would bring this back in the form of an ordinance.
Yeah, how do we, uh, where do we get an ethics officer? Do we contract that or?
Be a lawyer, um and our council has a name of someone who, who actually.
Good.
And hopefully they would be someone that we would just have on the books and never have a cause to use that person.
Right, kind of retainer kind of thing.
And who does that lawyer represent?
The city.
Is that fair and impartial?
I mean, it's higher side of the city, fair and impartial, it's like our hearing examiner is a third-party fair, fair and impartial lawyer.
Who would come up with the draft, the original draft?
For what?
The code.
It's here.
This is, this is okay.
It's in deep.
Where'd you get the, did you write this or borrow it?
No, this is, um our city attorney provided this for us, I believe, um it was Kirkland that was used as the template. Okay.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
I think, just reading through that prohibited conduct, there's still room for interpretation with definitions. And I still think there's gonna be a need for. Legal opinion sometimes. I know when I was doing the hate you thing, I asked you to ask Tom about my conflicts and try to stay pretty distant till the end, but um. There's still. Ambiguity in this, that would still warrant legal, but I think it's a good idea.
Not as ambiguous as not having any.
That's true.
Mention some word, uh what we expect from each other, and how we treat each other and those kind of things that I think are.
I think it's good to have expectations that are written out for in council and the community that know and understand.
Yeah, yeah, and accountability for that, I think that's really important, but uh. Actually, okay, I didn't actually get um TAPD, because the packet.
It's, it's online.
Yeah, the packet is.
TAPD.
The packet didn't come out with the TAPD, it came out with the same packet as the council meeting, not the study section. That was my issue.
Really, I just wanted to learn this afternoon, and it.
I got this on Andrews.
Yeah.
I just opened mine up tonight and it's there.
Did you get it off the website?
Yeah.
I just opened it off the website and the packet is the same for the council session as it is for the.
Yeah, it's all one packet Marco.
Oh.
If you open up the bookmarks thing on the right-hand side.
Yeah, I usually go there.
Tabs are, they're there.
Okay, there are ones, my bad.
So what we have our, what I have here. Okay. Question under two point two four oh two zero definitions.
Okay.
Is mayor considered part of city council? Because when you said all these things through here, I didn't see mayor.
So official is a member of the council or a member of a council-appointed committees or council-appointed group. So yeah, I think we need to add mayor in there as an official.
Yeah, I wonder, because he wasn't there.
Absolutely.
Okay. And not that you are doing anything, just I just saw, why isn't the mayor there?
And I, I would actually put staff in here as well, because I think all staff are, are city officials as well.
Yeah, I agree with that, because they represent the city.
And so I haven't reread this again, I've just seen my notes here. For be relatives, and it's listing what the relatives are.
Councils.
Are they somehow included in these, in this behavior?
Yeah, they are, if you go to nepotism, which is D. Uh sorry, it is um two point two four point oh five zero, section ten, nepotism.
Yeah.
But that's just says you can't.
It says what?
You can't appoint.
Oh, you're talking, okay, so it doesn't mean that if you have a family member that disagrees with. The council decision or something, that can't disagree, okay.
I just want, it's about hiring, like I wouldn't be able to hire Christine as a city employee.
Okay.
Because that would be.
And so when you have your pints thing. They don't buy you a pint, you, and you don't buy them a pint, you guys just buy your own pints.
Coffee.
Okay.
Pints are more popular, I must admit.
And on twenty, uh two point two four point oh four zero financial disclosure statements. We don't have to fill that out anymore, that one that we used to, right?
Yeah, you are correct, Shane, um except for when you're a newly elected official.
Okay.
When you're first applying, you have to do that.
Okay.
And I also noted, I think we were gonna look at this section, because the language here specifies. All officials.
Yeah.
Would include the design rating board, the planning commission, and any other council board that you guys appoint from another section. So I think we're gonna look at that for a little more clear.
Yeah, I agree.
Good. And so the ethics officer.
And yeah, that's interesting old language, and, and I think a lot of this probably was in Kirkland, so they were following RCWs.
And we did have to fill it out at one point.
You did.
But we, then they stopped it, it wasn't a yearly thing.
I believe it was COVID.
But then.
I think it was twenty twenty, they.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, just do it when you first are being elected.
So the ethic, ethics officer would be somebody that we hired.
Yep.
And so they're not gonna be creeping rounds of place. Well. I don't know what they do. Well, I don't know what they do, so they don't do anything on that. And can we personally file a complaint, or does that go through blah, 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 and then end up with you or something?
Anybody can file a complaint.
Okay. Okay, and the only other thing I think I circled was. Um that ethics officer question, but that was just answers. And the only other thing I think I circled was. Um, what is it, it's number nine on page, oh, there's no page number.
Oh, yeah, there's not.
No, I have a page numbers. Number nine under ethics standards. Council members go forfeit their office by failing to, okay, and we talked about that.
Yeah.
So if you didn't come to three consecutive meetings, and you didn't say anything to anybody, and nobody said your excuse for those three meetings. Then um you would have been an ethics violator.
Correct, so um I looked, I've been looking into this sort of thing for a little while. In the city of Yakima, where I worked a year ago, um there was a council member, and they got stipends like you guys do as well. Who attended the first, for the first six months of his four-year term, and then just stopped showing up. And continued to get paid. And just didn't come to meetings. And um the, the last meeting he showed up for was the last meeting of his term, where he voted on a code of ethics that. So that's kind of one of the things I put this in my head.
Wow. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, a question, um are LLCs addressed at all on this, like?
This is about the elected body.
Oh, no, but when we, when you're defining like theories, particularly regarding conference of interest.
Oh, the, the financial disclosure.
Yeah.
It. Does say interests, investments, interest in real property, sources of income, and creditors.
Thanks, Susan.
Cover LLCs, then that, that would be a fear.
They would probably have to disclose that.
Something additional is during our annual audits. Our auditors specifically look at. Almost everybody sitting at this entire table, definitely myself and the city administrator. But each and every one of them, they also get all the information about their spouses, who they work for. And we look to ensure that there are not. Funds going towards a private business that would be actually like directors.
Yeah.
So Toby, would there ever be any exemptions to this?
Exceptions to follow in the code of ethics?
Well, you're not a conflict, okay, let's say everybody here is a member of the chamber, and we both give chamber money.
Right.
That's an interesting. Question, T-Board, I guess my, I would go to, are you personally profiting from that? Gift of, from that, you know, uh from that.
Yeah.
Because they're using that money to advertise a new people here.
Yeah.
Well, and those are good questions, that is kind of dovetails to what I was gonna say is, on some of these things, is there any way we could put in some references? Because here on like twenty-two, twenty-four fifty, you put down on three, which is great, working for the common good. That can be ambiguous, and then respect for process, so is there any way we could get a reference for how that is? And one of the ideas that came to mind was um the legislative declaration, RCW forty-two thirty-ten, which says, you know. That the people of the state don't yield their sovereignty agency, so that would be a reference to say, working for the common good, like. We're not actually here for us, we're here for them. And how would we define a reference standard? For these, working for the common good and respect for process, I would want to see some kind of link to process. And some kind of reference standard for, what does that mean, working for the common good? Because that could mean something totally different to all seven of us. And I, I'm not trying to dig too deep in the weeds, but it actually does come to play when we're making decisions about. Is it ethical to say, hey, I believe this, or I've done my due diligence to go figure out what everybody wants? Or I've at least requested data from the city to say, what, you know, what is a public, what is a public interested in, in terms of whatever we're deliberating upon?
Yeah.
Okay, just look into it, I know it's a really tough question to ask with a lot of, with a broad, a broad license of interpretation. And I just feel like it's better to have, to be able to, to distill that into something a little more concrete, that's all, thank you.
Any other questions? You're on right back.
Yeah. For, for attendance specifically. Is there any way we can add some language that isn't just about three consecutive meetings? Like a total, like a total number in, in one given year or something like that, or, I mean.
Right.
Somebody could miss a couple of meetings and come back and then miss a couple more meetings, like if, if there's also just a total on a, on, on a year, that would be.
Yeah, sure.
Consistency, I like that.
Sure.
And not that I'm expecting anybody to just take advantage of the system, but it's nice to have the language in there if we're gonna do it.
Right, right.
So many, like three unexcused absences. At a year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, if you can't send an email and let your people know that you're not gonna make it. And there's a valid reason.
Or you're having a boat fish.
And you don't share the fish.
You were also at the meeting.
I was at the meeting.
Well, that, that, that attendance is gonna come up under a different.
Now, there's another communications policy that I've been working on, I'm waiting for council to give me some feedback on it. Uh and we were talking about. Uh in-person versus still virtual.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think it's more beneficial for people to be honest.
Yeah. Good idea.
We also talked about at least a management team meeting, changing the Zoom platform from a meetings. Where people can unmute themselves and say profane things. To a uh webinar platform, which is what we used to, when we went to COVID in, in the town that I was in, when we were, when we were working on it. So then, if somebody wants to, to participate in the meeting, they have to raise their hand, they get promoted to panelists, they have to turn on their camera, they have to show themselves. Announce themselves, and then they can communicate.
So like transit does, theirs is a webinar based on.
Yes, yeah.
So you'll see that in the future, in the fall, or in our communications policy.
Cool. I think that's important.
Yeah. Any other thoughts, comments, um changes, edits, more information needed?
Very thorough.
This is almost turnkey.
Well, now that I found it up, very impressed.
So I can bring back a, an amended um draft as an ordinance for your consideration, if that's directly like you go.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Toby.
Yes. Good addition.
All right, now down to council updates and suggestions for future agenda items. You want them to break in.
Oh, yeah, and maybe we can cover that when we do our fire report. So at um council's request, I reached out to our emergency management sergeant, the sheriff's office as well as. Mike Smith from Chilene County Fire three. Um to do a special workshop for the council about wildfire preparedness and evacuation. Um Zeke attended the Pibus Market one. If there are other elements of that that you feel um should be addressed, that we can invite, we can do that. They are both available most Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays starting August seventh. We could try to take the time now for you guys to look at your calendars and give me two or three dates that work for you. And we could have it either here, or we could go down to the firehouse.
What sort of timeframe are they looking for?
This is up to, well, it's your request, so they were said, they said they could be available in the evenings on a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday.
Yeah.
Would it be something that you would want to add to one of our study sessions, or would it be something on a different evening?
I think a different evening, because it would take up, but we have so many other, other competing topics for our study sessions. And it was two meetings ago that, that it was requested that we do something that's separate from a normal council night.
Okay.
And this would be open to the public.
It would be open to the public, like all council meetings are open to the public.
I would almost recommend it's not at the fire hall, the last two meetings I've had, been at the fire hall, the air conditioning hasn't been working.
Okay.
And it's been awfully crowded in there, I don't, I feel like this may draw a pretty good.
Yeah.
Community and, you know, engagement, so it might be great to have it in a place that. Has some. Air conditioning and, and some seating for people, so people aren't standing all around.
Yeah, and a speaker system.
Yep, and speaker system marketing.
Do you, do you think that chambers would be? Would fit the bill, or would you rather see us move to the fest hall or a school facility? I don't know, the school's got air conditioner, right?
Yeah, yes. Well, what, the fest hall's ours, right? Can we get that?
Fest hall's ours, easiest, not, eas- easiest for us to book that.
Yeah.
Yeah, might feel like a cavern, but.
But that's okay, I mean, we'll have a space no matter what.
Actually, it might be nice to do that as a dry run for the first public forum that we're gonna hold on the swimming pool.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, public, public town hall.
This is not really, I mean, it's not big enough to hold a town.
Yeah. All right, so I'm hearing, some, I need some dates, folks, that you, that.
He said, starting after August.
After August seventh.
Ah, okay.
So the eighth is.
I'll be out till the fifteenth, but I can zoom.
Yeah, our fifteenth or sixteenth.
Fifteenth is the farm-to-table dinner.
Yeah.
So anything, anything past the eighth, eighth on?
Yeah, right. And mind you, if there's an emergency. We're got to cancel, if there's a.
Fourteenth or sixteenth.
Yeah, I can.
It would have to.
I can't do this, I'm gone on the sixteenth, but I'm.
Sixteen would work for me.
About the previous week, like a Thursday of our council meeting. Yeah, like the evening of the tenth.
I could do the tenth.
Do the tenth.
I can do the tenth.
Ten on ten.
Remind me a doodle pole.
In the summer.
Doodle pole? I can do a doodle pole.
Do the doodles.
I'll do a doodle pole.
Sharon, do you have your availability here?
I do not. I will be away at a conference the weekend, the week of the sixth, of the fifteenth. But you guys can do this without me there.
Yeah.
Just wanted to let you know that, so I will put together. Just wanted to let you know that. So I will put together some dates for August. See if we can find one that works for, for most.
Okay, perfect.
And there's, there, we're figuring a Zoom capacity at the festival?
I'm told we can do Zoom, Zoom.
Yeah. Okay.
We also have to see when the festival is available, so I have to coordinate with them, check out the suit to make sure that the dates are provided you in the doodle pole.
You'll get a high school gym would be a good alternative.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're a cafeteria. Great acoustics in there. Clint showed us how nice the acoustics run there. That was great, when you emcee the, uh, the awards.
And the study session items that we have um. Scheduled currently for the August eighth is the chamber port. The Shalan County Port is going to be attending. We don't need to take time for the community development mid-year report because Noel can just put that in our package.
Yeah, I did get that.
So we do have another, we do have time unless we wanna. Do a long conversation with Ford. Uh, for another item. Topic.
I have uh, one item that somebody I just spoke to was uh, Columbus, Ohio. She was a liaison between the community felt disjointed from the downtown and she created a. Uh, a s- a program to integrate the community back into downtown. And she would love to just come and talk about that and how she did that, because I think that could be a problem. So she, the community felt disjointed from the downtown of Columbus, Ohio. The city itself and the community felt like they were two different things. So she created a program, like a community stove program where. She developed uh, events where the community would come into downtown and, you know, worked with different restaurants and different. Venues to bring community members into downtown to help them re, to feel like downtown was theirs again. It was a really interesting perspective she had.
Hmm.
Uh, she lives here and she's moving back to Ecuador soon, so I. Could send you an email about that. And I was just curious if the, if the council would be interested in hearing her talk about her experience doing that in Columbus, Ohio. Should be willing to do it here.
I'm interested.
I have a question. And depending on the answer. Does the council meetings have to be here?
Do council meetings have to be here?
We have to advertise and we don't.
They do not have to be. Oh, well, that's a good question. Is it under LM? Don't we have a code that says they are here?
We, as long as we put it on our notifications that go up, which we do.
Right.
You know, about we can advance, we can have a separate location.
And I know we could move temporarily, but here's, here's my question. Since we talked about the Osborne property. What to do with it and the expansion in this building at? Twelve million dollars or whatever it was. Since we own that building. And we put a council chamber in there. In part of that building. Hold it as an annex to this building. And move whatever we need to move from upstairs. In here without having to spend that kind of money.
Oh. Creative.
Yeah.
Something to.
Anything's possible.
Yeah.
It's a good one.
The other, but the other piece was if we use. That expansion and that to move the library out, we get space down here too.
Yes.
Uh, Mayor, excuse me, T-Bore, can you say that one more time? You cut out partway through.
My question was if. If we have the ability to take part of the Osborne property. Create a council chamber there as an annex to this building. Older meetings there in a larger facility, we would create a brand new room. And then do the city hall expansion that we need. Uh, into this room and maybe even still move the library. But we have the parking. People would have to fight the highway. Uh, and it just. We're using this room twice a month.
It's used more.
We, we, we use it twice a month, yeah. But if we had a bigger space, we'd also have the ability. To rent it as a conference room.
I'm not sure we have the parking there though, because we don't own the parking part of it.
But we own the backside, we can create a parking lot.
We don't wanna eliminate green space, though.
No, no, it's back where the basketball. All that stuff is, you know, the basketball courts and.
Oh, where it's fenced off.
Yeah, it's more parking than here. It's something to think about.
No, it is something.
Yeah, it is something to think about.
Okay. That's my question.
Okay.
Good one.
Mr. Mayor, did you want to address this uh, comment about? Political signs that was distributed to us? Or Selby, do you wanna address that?
Yeah, it is part of my update anyway. Okay, um, so I'll go ahead and get to that. Okay, right here. Staff has dealt with a lot of complaints about campaign signs and their placement over the last few weeks. Um, one is a letter from one of the mayoral candidates who was complaining about signs being placed. Um, within the city's right of way. Uh, and I've learned a lot. About Washington state law in this regard over the last few weeks, and it's a hundred eighty degrees from Massachusetts state law that I'm familiar with. In Massachusetts, municipalities prohibit political signs within the right of way and go further to say you have to place them at least. Five or six feet away from the edge of pavement to ensure it is on private property with that owner's permission.
Correct.
Washington state law is different. You can legally place a political sign between the curb. And the sidewalk in that grass strip.
If it doesn't interfere.
Um, there is also a law that prohibits political signs um, on the right of way of any state highway. And this is a thing that we received many complaints about over the last week or so. And have been chewing on with legal counsel. Um. After some investigation, it looks like Wash Dot does indeed prohibit the placement of campaign signs within the highway right of way. But they leave the enforcement of that up to the local municipality. And our code is silence on whether or not signs are prohibited from the right of way of Highway two. So in summary, we've been advised by our, our attorney to um, let these. Things reside where they are currently. Um, we did communicate, some of them um, have been tied to city trees. That's not allowed. And we're not allowing that. We've asked those ties to be removed. Um. And I think after the November election, staff will most likely bring some suggested changes to our sign regulations for council consideration.
That would be great. I, I would, uh. I would like to eliminate some sign pollution.
What's there now with one race and think about two more competitive races. And if everybody does. Follow suit, the current suit. All through autumn leaf and all through Oktoberfest, we're gonna have people coming into town and seeing up to six signs per location.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's going to look ridiculous.
Yeah, and I would also add that I think post-election, there should be a time limit to where those signs. Sorry, I didn't mean to be redundant.
Yeah.
There's already in place, but the, the other, uh. Now, the other thing is that. They have to be allowed in the right of way in Washington state. But with the caveat that you can require they have the permission of the adjoining landlord. So I can see in the right of way, but you can request. So that's the other thing. We're not becoming over, not just cleaning up along the highways. But that you need the permission of the adjoining landlord.
So you mean like, so for example, Cash and Rally Bank. Adjacent landlord, you need.
Them, if it's gonna be in their right, on the right of way in front of them, but not along Highway two, that wouldn't be allowed. If, if we go with Wasdah.
Hmm.
They don't allow.
Anything along.
Along this.
Right away.
The highway.
So that stuff that's there is illegal.
But Wash Dot will not enforce.
Right, they're not, they're, it's up to us to enforce.
Local jurisdiction.
And because we don't comment on it.
Well.
We don't say we go along with Wasdah. So that's the clarification that'll have to be made, but we'll do it after this election. And, and the third, the second thing is even in the city. Part.
Right.
It needs, we can require that it needs that approval. So it'll need. Gondo's approval, let's stick it in front of his.
Adjacent property.
Adjacent property in the, in the right of way. Currently, it doesn't.
So right now, then we're gonna be stuck until November.
Well, yeah, essentially.
We've been advised by our city attorney to not. Take action changes.
Have to take action. Okay.
Not even right after the primary?
Yeah, I'm just thinking right after the primary.
Well, you are the council. And if, if the council wants us staff to bring a code revision that we just discussed. To a meeting in September or October or August, August might be a little too soon for me to get my ducks in a row.
Yeah.
I, I work for you. So if you're directing me to bring you code changes, I will do that.
I think it'd be good after the primary. I don't think we should put, wait till November eleventh. I think cause we got festivals coming. I think. The primary's gonna be a done deal. Okay, it's there, but after that, they need to be gone if they're not.
Yeah, broken. I'd like to support Zeke's proposal. I think making sure we have better provisions for assigned placement before November, before. The next November election might be a good idea.
We're only talking about Wash Dot though.
Okay, but this.
Yeah, yeah. What about the permission from the abutting property owner for placement within the right of way?
I would like that too. I mean. We made some very distinct code changes years ago for designated sign areas. With political signs in mind, um. Garage sale signs, all the, all the various things. And if we can continue to focus more on those designated areas rather than having it be a free for all. I think that that would. Help kind of clean things up a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm happy to do that.
I mean, people can choose government in their yards, whatever they want.
Sure, yeah. There's lots of places to put signs. It's just that right away.
Right away is a very visible and highly marketed place. It needs to be regulated. Thank you.
Alright, I've got my marching orders.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Selby.
Alright, so we have one more comment to make about our final theme is that I would like a review of our committees. I feel like our committees um, may not have. Um, accurate. Public community representation. I've not really looked at, I've looked at a couple of committees and they're not, there's not always as much community representation as I'd like to see. A lot of it's business representation. And I'd just like a review of that, cause I know we have a certain policy as to. What level of community representation you have in a committee, cause there are a special interest group that makes recommendations about certain things to the council and then things move forward. And if it's all business owners, then you only get business representation. You don't get community representation, and I'd like to see that change.
Very nice question.
Thank you.
Does there really have any specifics that would be helpful, but? Um. Alright, let's take a break. We've got six minutes. Alright.
Okay. Sorry, everyone. I forgot to mute us.
Are we unmuted?
Yes, we are.
You see? Anybody see purple light? I'm not seeing it. Okay. Mike Smith. That bunk up there?
I see an LT lieutenant.
Oh. Smith is.
Yeah.
Is there a mic, Smith? The mic on top. I know, I see a mic, but I don't know if it's the right mic. He's gotta hear us.
Yeah.
We're not having good luck here.
Can we get a sound check from somebody on Zoom?
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you. Good. So we're at least. Being heard, but we're not being identified with either one of our public safety report folks. So we'll skip for now, and if they show up soon, we'll go back to them. Comments from public on items not on our agenda. Anybody have a comment? On, I'm not on the agenda?
Correct.
You wanna come up?
There's more chairs. I can't see if there's people out there, but there's more chairs here in front. Is there anybody?
Six chairs at least. If anybody wants to sit.
Okay.
My name's Karen here. I live at thirteen eighty Commercial Street in town. And I am questioning the interpretation. Of the findings of the Upper Valley PRSA recreational needs assessment. That was done in twenty twenty-one. Um, there's an executive summary page that has these graphs on it. That shows that, uh. The. Top priority for facilities. Um, of indoor swimming pool came at the top. And this is determined by a mathematical equation, the. Priority investment rating. Is the unmet needs rating. Plus an importance rating. And an indoor pool was given an unmet needs rating of a hundred. And an important ratings of a hundred, so it was the top choice. But why does it have an unmet needs? Rating of a hundred? Because no one in Leavenworth has an indoor pool. Um, on page fifty-five of this. Um, it says, please indicate if you or any member of your household has a need. For each of these facilities listed below. And they list a whole bunch of facilities. An indoor swimming pool was sixty-seven percent. But there's three different categories of walking and bicycling paths. One was seventy-six percent, one's eighty-three percent. And one on the next page is eighty-three percent. So it seems like. People. Want more walking and biking paths, according to the survey that's on the city's website. So if these three similar items were combined into one choice. I think it would result in a higher priority. And nothing in the needs assessment takes cost into consideration. Dollars to build a facility. And dollars to staff and maintain a facility. And I think many people in Leavenworth might prioritize. Recreation that was ready to use and didn't cost the town as much money. In the press release. From this, um, about this from the city of Leavenworth. And dated on November seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. It states key needs assessment recommendations include expanding a network of shared use. Walking, hiking, biking paths to connect Upper Valley neighborhoods and communities. And expanding access to the community pool. For year-round, more inclusive access. If paths were listed first in that summary. Were they deemed more important? And how did expanding access? Morph into an aquatic center? Replacing the community pool in our lines book park. Um, so based on my interpretation of this. Needs assessment. Leavenworth doesn't need an aquatic center. We don't need to swap the pool in Lions Book Park. And we do need to take more time to see what the public actually wants.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Others who comment on items not on the agenda?
You can see the survey from the architect, so. Okay.
Seeing any, catching any? Alright, we will move on to resolutions, ordinance orders and other business. Item six, resolution oh nine twenty twenty-three incentive pay for union employees. Selby.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, before you. Council members is. Rev- resolution offering incentive pay to. But to gardening units as was discussed at your last meeting in. but to bargaining units as was discussed at your last meeting in executive session. And the amount that you requested, we bring forward. So this is a um resolution that will provide incentive retention bonus pay to our union and staff in the amount of twenty five hundred dollars for our full-time staff. That would be payable um two hundred and fifty dollars per month for a period of ten months, starting in September, which would be the October fifth paycheck. Um, then we're also going to provide a hundred and twenty five dollars for our seasonal and part-time employees um who are not in the, not covered by the collective bargaining agreement. So this incentive pay is allowable under section twenty three point oh three of the Teamsters collective bargaining agreements um that run through the end of twenty four.
Alright. Somebody wanna make a motion?
The Leavenworth City Council moves to approve resolution zero nine dash twenty twenty three, approving one-time incentive pay for representative employees.
Second. By quiet seconded by Jason, now discussion? Questions? It's been discussed by.
Yes, we took an hour of discussion last meeting.
I feel like we, we discussed it pretty well, um, the last time we addressed it. I would love to hear from the employees that I believe are, are here purposefully for this action item.
Yeah.
Any comments in the public?
I would love to, thank you. Great. My name is John J. Shonks, um, live at three twenty C Hill Drive, um, Parks Division Supervisor. I've been employed with the city for fourteen years. On fourteen years. Uh, first of all, hello and thank you for taking my comments, the consideration. Um, I'm gonna give you a timeline of events, so early in twenty twenty two, so there's not exact dates on this, I did not dig back into the big council minutes to find all this. Uh, these days are pretty close. Early in twenty twenty two, the city hired an HR firm, Kiff Coffin Associates, to conduct a salary study for its non-representative employees, i.e. upper management, so city administrator, department directors. Um, spring of twenty twenty two, findings from the study indicated that raises were justified and the implementation of said raises were given and back to January one, twenty twenty two. I was then and still am happy for these employees and that they're being properly compensated for their work. Uh, early on, early in summer of twenty twenty two, the union business representative, Sir Paul Carlin, appeared before council to ask why representative employees were not included in the study. I wasn't at that meeting, but a s- a study was conducted for the representative employees. So my guess is that you agree that it should have happened. Um, summer of twenty twenty two, the city hired the same HR firm, Coffin Associates, to conduct a salary study for the representative employees. Fast forward about a year, spring of twenty twenty three, the completed salary study was received by the city. The city then asked the union to bring forward a proposal, which we did. The union proposal was for full implementation of the same study with the findings and to be retroactive to January first, twenty twenty two. That is the rundown of events, um, from our, our side. Some of my points would be both studies were conducted by the same company, using the same comparator agencies and the same methodology and the same metrics. The actions that you considered tonight, that you voted on tonight, um, they do not address retroactive compensation for your employees who waited a year and a half for this to be made right, for the equitable suspension measure. I absolutely applaud. Thank you for your advice.
Thanks, Jeff.
My name is Christian Winston, I'm a building inspector for the city of Leavenworth, and I'm also a steward for the union. Um, I wanted to talk to you tonight about union negotiations and compensation studies. Uh, to be clear, the city and the union are not in negotiations, we are under contracts and it's entered into, it gets a uh, six months after that contract was entered into, management had a compensation study done for non-representative members and that for revenue trust. Uh, they use comparator agencies like Wenatchee, East Wenatchee and Shalane County. And those comparator agencies are what determines wages. Uh, while management use the local labor market and they use comparator agencies that are not similar, population, staff, and operational budget, union members use communities like Sela, Omack, Frehend. So when you use two vastly different models to establish wages of union and non-union members, you get inequity. And management seemingly agreed that this was inequitable because later in the year, they agreed to a compensation study for union members. And the opening paragraphs of that study say this compensation review process was precipitated by the concern of management that employees should be recognized for the level and scope of work performed and that they are paid on a fair and competitive basis. The desire by management to ensure that the internal relations are based upon objective, non-quantitative evaluation factors resulting in equity across level. Why is this study not being considered? It's nearly identical to the study that was done for management. And when the compensation study that was done for management was brought before council, council moved to approve and accept it and ordinance was passed immediately and salaries were retroactively paid. All we want is equity and fairness. And we've been denied this for over a year. It's upsetting to say the least. Uh, we respect the fact that the city wants to attract higher, higher caliber candidates and be competitive in the local labor market. And we want the same thing for the people on the grounds. The study showed union representatives are underpaid by an average of ten point three percent. The building official position is vacant, it's underpaid by thirty percent. The senior planner position is vacant, it's underpaid by twenty eight percent. The water plant supervisor position has been advertised for three months, it's underpaid fifteen percent. We understand we're not in negotiations, but we also understand what's unfair and unjust to the majority of the city's employees. And we trust you'll make this right. Thank you for your time and sense.
Hey, anybody else?
Evening, council. I'm Paul Carlin, business representative for teachers, little seven sixty in Wenatchee, also Shalane County resident. And I represent the majority of employees at the city under collective bargaining agreement. Um, I'm gonna cut through some of this since I heard from Christian and John. I think a big part of what you're hearing is that the exclusion of the representative employees in this wage study and how that study was done has left a gaping disparity between represented and nonrepresented. And we've been back and forth on this. Uh, which is why I think that you've got all these folks here tonight, so I do appreciate it all here tonight for, here on this issue. At one point, we were hopeful that the city was gonna do the right thing as you paid for another wage study by the same company, using the same methodology. But when those results finally came in, the city chose not to implement those findings that would have provided wage increases. As Christian pointed out, wage increases that are needed right now as the city has lost employees and is struggling with applicant pools uh to fill positions, though. Instead, you're considering right now two hundred and fifty dollar a month retention bonus to employees moving forward. Um, this, there's no question, this amount of money is far less than the increase suggested by the COF study for the representative employees. Again, same company, same methodology. And while we don't agree that the two hundred and fifty dollar amount is commensurate with what is indicated by the study, if it is considered by the council, if this is what's under consideration, what we're asking for is that that amount be retroactive to January first, two thousand twenty two in the same way that without batting an eye, without wavering for a moment, this was made, the wage increases for the non-representative employees were made retroactive when it was done for them without batting an eye. We're asking you to do the same thing. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any none? Any other questions?
Well, let me make a comment.
Okay.
Cause I wasn't here during the twenty two spring and summer or during the negotiations, right? What was presented to us today was this. We don't have the power to open that contract back up. But, or we have to deal with what's presented to us and what we do instead in executive session that we make a decision when it's presented to us. You guys, I wish we, I wish it would have been done, but I, I don't know why it wasn't done, I wasn't here. But I wasn't sitting on council when the study was done. But to do the right thing, that's not before us to man. I wish it was, but it's not. What's before us is this bonus money. And that's the only thing we deal with right here, right now.
Well, if I, if I may.
Sure.
We were told that, because we gave you a proposal. We, we gave you a proposal to implement this study and we were told that US council members were given some mic. I'm sorry. We were told that the council did receive study that we suggested be implemented. There were a couple of corrections that needed to be made from that study. We made those corrections. We also made the study consistent internally, which ultimately was less than what the study suggested. That was a proposal that we gave to the mayor and the city administrator as well as Cabada that was in the meeting. And we were told that that proposal would be presented to the council for consideration. Whether it was or not, I don't know, but I'm surprised to hear that it may be that you haven't looked at it.
I haven't, yeah.
You were, now wait a minute, wait a minute. This is not negotiations, folks. This isn't where we're at.
Right.
You, you were given information that we had and the decision was not to try to open up. And the other decision was we were informed by legal, right? That we cannot do retroactive, that that's a gift of public funds. Once a contract is signed, it is a binding contract. You can, you either have to open it up, but you can't go backwards. So the only, you can, the only thing we can do is move forward and give a retention.
That's entirely inaccurate.
Well, that's what our legal, we, we have to trust legal counsel.
Legal counsel.
She is.
Nikki. Nikki, Nikki.
Way in here. Um, the direction that, that council took um in our last conversation was not to reopen the contract. The council can, if it so chooses, if that's the policy direction, it can reopen the contract. It does not have to, and it is a closed contract. This isn't there is no opener in this contract. Um, it, it would be an entirely a policy call by the council, but you're absolutely correct that we cannot do retro payment on an, an open contract.
So I'm going to go ahead and call for a question. All those in favor of?
I'd like to make one more comment. When we did discuss the non-represented um wage increases, it wasn't just quickly batting an eyelash. We went back and forth several times and created a lot of negotiation over that. It wasn't just a quick approval, as I recall. Remember that?
Yeah.
So I just wanna make that clear that we didn't just accept it, you know, straight out of their gate. We actually went back and forth several times to make sure it was appropriate.
I would like to note that the non-represented union employees did not receive a raise January one, twenty twenty two. And the collective bargaining agreement did include between ten and eleven percent increase for the union represented employees that did go into place on January one, twenty twenty two.
Thank you for that.
Council, you chose to not give this side a raise because you wanted a compensation study of our positions.
Thanks, Yentel.
It's awkward, I'll say. I think everybody up here wants fair and equitable pay across the board, and I doubt any staff in here would say otherwise. I would be surprised if you think that we prefer upper management to any other position, I think you're you're mistaken, and I'm sorry if you feel that way. But I'll say, sitting up here making decisions on policy and budget, we generally don't like to get into the weeds on how much people make. But the inherent awkwardness of the situation is if some of our employees are represented by the union and some are not, and so the union has its purpose to protect you and pro- provide for you and negotiate for you on your behalf. And the non-represented employees do not have that, so it creates, it automatically creates two different scenarios. And for us to wrestle with um the nuances of benefits and pay is pretty awkward from this position, I'll say.
There's always gonna be an imbalance.
Well, they're not, you're not treated the same inherently because some of you are represented.
Yeah.
And so it creates this negotiation that is awkward, quite frankly. So I'm sorry if employees feel like they're undervalued. I certainly would change that in a heartbeat and I would evaluate everybody under the same salary survey and treat everybody the same. But when you have a representation like you do, it creates two different playing fields.
I would ask, I think I can ask this. Comparative wage to cash, what, what would you compare the wages to?
No, but, let's.
You can't go there?
Yeah, we're not gonna go into negotiating, we're not gonna go into any of that. We're gonna deal with the issue at hand and we're not gonna go back and forth. Okay, that's just not.
I wanna just clarify.
I know, but that's those are for a different day, different time. What you have before you is the thing that you would agree to.
I'd be open to not moving forward with this motion and having more internal dialogue and education on our behalf and talk about it more. But I don't want that to set an expectation that it's gonna change anything. But I think this is eye-opening to have all the employees here pissed off. So I'm open to more discussion among council and legal and
I am too.
We have time.
Yeah.
This was originally not gonna um take place until the September pay period, so we have, we have some time for some future conversation.
We can do another closed meeting on the eighth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nikki, are you available on the eighth?
I will make myself available.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we had the motion made. Does somebody want to?
We could vote it.
Table, table it or put it?
I can rescind my motion.
Huh?
I can rescind my motion.
Rescind your motion.
So rescind it.
One second. Okay, we take it back off. Um, we will what's the, what's the proper term here? We will we normally move it to a date certain, but we don't have a date certain.
Do you scratch it?
Yeah. Okay, we'll just scratch it. We'll bring it up again on, in a different time and when we, when we have the time. Alright.
Mr. Mayor, I would request that when we do address this um in August, uh, that we have prepared in our packet um a history of the last twelve to eighteen months of how both sides have kind of ping ponged back and forth and the adjustments that have been made so that we can see in front of us any potential disparities.
Maybe even a little bit farther back on salary increases for both represented and nonrepresented, maybe a couple of years of context. At least until the last um union negotiation.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause we're, we're not usually involved. We are not usually involved in those. We can pass it and assume that both parties are happy. And we don't like to find ourselves in this position.
Yeah.
I appreciate those who, John, Christian, snapping out and um taking, taking that.
Yeah. It's okay. And again, I think, I think. As we've said, we do appreciate all of our workers and it's always been our goal to get us all on the same page and how we get there, so we'll, we'll keep working at that, but.
we'll, we'll keep working at that. But you know, you're not devalued by any of us. I don't. So.
I think it's a great point to make that if we don't have enough employees to fill the slots, the other employees are taking up slack. And that's a great point that you made about people not filling positions.
I appreciate the folks who um, Aaron, uh, Tom and everybody that did the work on the pool and painted and took care of, made the frog look new and the, the community loves it, absolutely loves it.
Thank you, Mr. Minister, and thank you for letting us take up your time tonight. You've been on for business.
Next, thanks, guys.
Next item.
All right. Yeah.
Yeah.
You don't have to sit through the boring time. Thanks for coming in together. Be late.
Thank you.
Thank you for showing up.
Thank you.
I'm Red.
And Fred, Jason.
How you doing?
Nice to you.
And I know you.
Hi, Red.
Mr. Mayor. I'm just gonna shake everybody's hand. If you hit a homerun.
All right. Item number seven is a professional service agreement with Boatstar Partners. We would like to hire a lobbying firm to help us create the funding stream that we need for affordable housing. And I'll just um, address the topic briefly. Um, I think most of you are aware, I've been actively pursuing a funding stream for the city of Lovingworth to deal with our affordable housing crisis and our workforce housing beyond just the affordable designation, but workforce housing. And I have done lots of lobbying and working with our legislators and have a number of relationships that I think um, have been productive and helpful in getting us closer. Um, but the reality is I'm just a single person who's mostly stuck in Leavenworth and um, have got numerous, numerous advi- or numerous people advising us that if we really want to get over the hurdle, over the top, we really need to get a lobbyist on our behalf that's there in Olympia working the system from day one, even before day one, but all the way through and has those connections and can greatly expand what one lonely mayor has been trying to knock my head against the wall. So um, one of the, the um, people that I've been pleased and fortunate to work with um, uh, in, in various capacities here um, is Blake Baldwin, um, longtime area resident and has different capacities. But one of his was working at the state level with both Senator Hawkins, I believe, early. And then through the governor's office, um, Governor Inslee representing this side of the state and other position statewide. Um, and he's now uh, again gone to work for a lobbying firm called Boatstar, who is, who is headed up by Brian Boniger. Is that? Boniger, okay. Who also has, you know, has, was Governor Inslee's former chief of staff, um, worked in commerce under Inslee. Um, now has this, you know, and has those connections. So um, our proposal, and I'm going to have Blake come up and, and speak to about his organization and live things he could help us, but we really think this can help put us um, get us through that home stretch, so to speak. So Blake, you want to come up and? And Blake, by the way, is a brand new dad.
I'm very sleep deprived, so please forgive me for stumbling in my words. Thank you very much. Uh, so yeah, thank you for having me this evening. Sorry that Brian couldn't attend yet. Uh, family members, that's ever quick news. So, uh, yes, I, I work for Boatstar Partners. I was born and raised here in the upper valley, uh, just behind shafts and pinnacles of the Walla Canyon. So I really firsthand see the housing crisis really worsen and become uh, really a crisis during the last several years, uh, particularly in cities like Lethmore, Shalan, Lake Tofogar, friends of the mountains, Friday Harbor and others. So uh, in conversations with the mayor, uh, for many years in all different capacities, most recently I was working for Shalan County Director of Economic Development and we during the pandemic had attempted some fiscal flexibility to allow personal local revenue sources, existing revenue sources, I should know, to help uh, raise revenues to build a affordable house. Um, Shalan County during that time was actually, I think, as a whole, or at least in a global, I run through our uh, finance staff and accounting, about sixteen percent uh, increase in lodging tax revenues during uh, in two years during the pandemic. So we were uniquely positioned for some of that fiscal flexibility. Uh, that was very difficult policy and proposal to pursue at the time. And we were, we're not successful. So kind of fast forward to now, I know the mayor's continued this conversation. Uh, city council members continue these conversations, union members have as well. And so we're just looking at different ways to establish a new, separate and brand new revenue stream, uh, really looking at how to raise funds for building workforce housing, looking at how we can do this and help benefit folks up to earning a hundred and twenty percent there. Uh, I'm going to maybe stop there and just end with, I don't, we don't have specific details and we'd be reluctant to share, you know, this idea or that idea in a, in the public forum. Uh, but if we were to work together, I think, you know, the, the big issue here uh, is that, that there is the housing study eleven were produced a couple of years ago or a year ago, less than twenty percent of the workforce of Lethmore that actually lives within the city limits. And that's a unique problem to tourism oriented communities uh, that revenue generated from tourism could be what we should be looking at as a funding stream to help support the housing, uh, the housing markets for workforce, uh, workforce, uh, workers here in Lethmore. And uh, we're going to be looking at that through the new authority, uh, through potentially a lodging or another housing surcharge. So uh, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Our, our firm has been in existence for, I believe, four to five years. It was founded by Ryan Ballender. He was the governor's uh, director of the Department of Commerce for several years before that. Worked for him in Washington DC. He's a congressional representative, that's his uh, chief of staff. Uh, also my partner, Molly Keen, he's part of the firm, uh, chief in Opanon and state congressional government, uh, for career and then I think, you know me now. So probably overshared, but if anyone has any questions, please feel free to ask me this time. Yes.
Who has um, folks like you representing them in, around this area with communities?
That's a great question. So we last year signed a contract with the Shalan Douglas Regional Port Authority. And they were looking at several capital infrastructure projects as well as a legislative proposal to unify the tax levy uh, between Shalan and Douglas counties. So our, our port authority is very unique in that it's been functionally consolidated. It's the first of its kind uh, in the state of Washington. And uh, it's a Shalan and Douglas county while they remain two separate taxing districts and two separate ports have functionally consolidated share staff assets and actually Shalan County owns percentages of assets in Douglas County. However, our taxpayers on, on uh, I say ours, but Shalan County resident, uh, Shalan County residents pay a greater amount uh, for, for tax revenue. So we also saw after we were successful in passing specific legislation to our regional port authority here to allow them to send a valid measure of motors to consider a leviation that involves Shalan, Douglas counties to balance that out. So um, so we represent Shalan of this regional port authority, some of our other clients, uh, including nonprofits that do work in, in the city uh, or not in the city, in Shalan, Douglas counties. Uh, we are in the housing space currently. We represent a group called Coalition Affordable Housing Developers. These are for-profit developers that are currently make up about, I believe it was just under fifty percent over the last ten years of the Washington State Housing Finance Commission's bond, four percent, nine percent uh, housing incentive tax credit programs. And so uh, they have developments throughout Shalan County, eastern Washington. Uh, but what we're seeing, what we continue to see is that more and more of these programs at the state level, some of the current streams that exist, both for-profit developers, but also nonprofits, so the Department of Commerce and, and the Housing Trust Fund. A lot of these programs are really being focused and these developments are only occurring in places like Seattle, Tacoma, really the I-5 corridor, some in Spokane, but are more metropolitan areas because there is a cap of the area needing, uh, it's only, it's served up to households up to eighty percent. So a lot of, for a lot of developers, especially for profit, it just doesn't pencil. So we need to look into that. We're considering policies that work for, working lots of people here in Shalan. Yeah.
What exactly would you do for us in that job?
So my city today, so I live here right now. Uh, I actually live here all the time, I should say, but I also have an apartment that the firm had in Olympia. So I'm there during legislative sessions, January, this year it'll be through kind of mid-March, I believe. It's a short session. And I'll be going up to the hill every single day, meeting with legislators if we decide, as the city of Lethmore decides to propose and find a legislative sponsor to have a piece of legislation, I'd be advocating for that bill, working with legislators along the way, uh, and meeting with legislators, uh, different key committee members, particularly looking at perhaps the finance committee, any committee that deals with taxation and also the housing committees of both chambers. And also we'd be testifying on behalf of the city of Lethmore and any committee here so that it would have to advance it through legislative process. Uh, my preference actually is to involve anybody here in the city council. Uh, I'm very happy to testify on behalf. It's far more impactful. Uh, in Olympia right now, obviously here in Platoon, it's pretty, not always fun to drive over Stevens, Blue and Palm Passes, but there is, there are virtual uh, committee opportunities now after, after the pandemic and one possible. You know, that I suppose, uh, but would always love to see you face as a person. Does that answer your question or?
Sort of. Um, where, where, how much would it cost the city a month or is it, you get a month?
There, there's a stipend of three thousand that we're going to be doing through.
Three thousand a month. And where would that money, what fund would that come out of?
Chantel.
Absolutely. Uh, in our general fund, we have a set placeholder of fifty thousand dollars for economic incubator or fellowship, you know, different types of professional service contracts. And that's what this could fall under. So it's not requiring a budget amendment.
Okay. And what do you think of multifamily tax?
Multifamily tax credit?
Yeah.
I think that it is definitely an impactful existing resource to utilize. But I do think that in order to meet, especially in tourism oriented communities, to meet the demands uh, of the workforce here, we should be looking at new funding streams and not competing with any current funding streams like a lodging tax that does help support uh, local tourism, change works and other things. But we had a new funding stream to help support the construction of.
And is that new funding stream you're talking about us, the rest of us?
No, I think that we would be, we want to pin down specifics and we're getting here as a, as a group and have a work session with the city council, with the mayor and administration. But I think just right out of the gate, something that we have been discussing, would be okay to share here is just looking at some tourism oriented funding streams. So we're not taxing locals. It's not revenues raised on locals, not coming out of existing sources of, of revenue from the city of Lethmore, but looking at a new authorization that's outside of the current state statute to be able to raise additional revenues. You know, I live in the state of Seattle, um, which I don't very often downtown, super expensive, but you know, you look at your, your tax, your lodging tax bill and there's lodging tax, very similar to here. Uh, you do Wenatchee where I live, uh, but also there's stadium tax and this tax and another tax. And so I think what we're looking at is just a very modest, but tourism oriented revenue source that helps or housing bill.
Okay. I just don't want it to come from the taxpayers.
Yeah.
I'm guarding that.
That's a very quick.
Yeah.
So Blake, you're thinking specifically of Lethmore and the hotel is here that, that on the hotel thing, besides hotel motel, it'd be another possible tax. Okay. Or designated for affordable housing.
Correct. I think that that's kind of our first early workforce, uh, import. I think that's the early idea that that could develop. And if it does, I actually, I should say, it always develops the legislative process. Uh, we're going to have an idea and it's going to you know, one legislator might have a grand idea that might have a concern, might address that concern in detail. But the general idea is how can we leverage this incredible asset since Lethmore has, which is tourism and constant flow of processes and that, that's not going to change. And but how can you use that, that success to be able to support housing, but actually if you're working to support all that funding. And I think, you know, I, I was a, my, my wife had a delivery in, uh, uh, so we were there for about a week in the hospital and talking to so many different nurses and everyone loves Lethmore and I grilled a lot of them on, and what would it? If you've got an island, you know, a percent or two coming and staying in the city of Lethmore, you can have a vacation rental, see that on the bill or, or seeing that, that hotel or bed and breakfast seats. So I don't think we, you know, established, we have that something.
Yeah. And would that translate to county wide or just Lethmore?
So I think the, the way that we could look at this is by um, looking at how to, to specifically write language for tourism oriented.
Okay.
So.
Statewide.
It could, it could be statewide. I think there are ways to put that in language. You gotta be reluctant to kind of share some of that. Uh, but there, there are ways to write legislation that's very specific, um, without providing a specific example, an example of what that specific language looks like when certain legislators are trying to get a legislative budget proviso, it's not a bill, but just language written into a budget, say for a nonprofit uh, in Lethmore that supports uh, community land trust housing.
Yeah.
And, and you could say, uh, you know, the legislature here by allocates two million dollars to support affordable workforce housing for a nonprofit organization. Beast of the rest of the Cascade Mountains between, uh, you know, Stevens Pass here or whatever. And I mean, the Columbia River, uh, that specifically serves this and gravity. And so you can really be specific in how you write that legislation to be sure that Lethmore is maybe Shalan, maybe Friday Harbor, maybe Walla Walla.
Yeah.
Maybe some of these communities that are so disproportionately impacted, you know, housing market is affected that they can, they can uh, benefit from all.
And when those come in the form of grants as well?
I believe it would just be probably funded a tax source.
Okay. And so would you be working also within the scope of more grants for this kind of affordable housing?
It'd be an interesting concept to, to explore and I'd love to use exact conversation to have and ask you to think before this, you know, work session.
Okay, yeah, cause we received a grant from um, Schreier, Ken Schreier, Dr. Schreier, um, just for affordable housing. And if we could see more of those available, that would help tremendously.
I, I would imagine that the revenue source would be kind of a grant program inside of.
Yeah, essentially what the revenue stream would do would give us the ability to give grants um, to those developers. We wouldn't develop the housing, but we would, we would be the grand tour now because we would have a funding stream. And say, give us your proposals of how you would permanently give us workforce housing. And yeah.
So when I worked at Shalan County, I worked with commissioners to develop a cascade public destruction, but it's using the rural county's tax dollars and to build a grant program for municipalities and other public, I believe Lethmore has been recipient of those funds in the past as well as organizations here. So uh, definitely a familiar there. We, that's also, we're not just lobbyists, uh, we are consultants first. So then.
You only do government lobbying or do you do private lobbying for corporations?
We, we do work for, we represent uh, private companies as well. We represent uh, one of them, of course, for this university history. So the internet services company, uh, and then both represent nonprofits and, uh, also, and, and our only other government contract, which we've actually uh, you think that that's good because a lot of times you're getting in a room, you're having to uh, meeting with legislators for so long, so you're prioritizing. Uh, and so we only are working also to show that we should report authority. There are other firms out there that have thirty cities uh, that are covered by two consultants and you're kind of, it's just a big, it may basically going with A W, Association of Washington Cities, uh, legislative platform navigating for that. Uh, but we see this unit because we tailor it for singular issues with our delegation.
What's the possibility of having a specialty license like statewide for housing?
Oh, see, that's a really interesting perspective. I, I yeah, I can't give you a confident answer and I have a lot of my words on the record to say, but absolutely, I figured that was a really great idea. And that again, another, uh, another idea, another proposal for each table work session.
Okay.
I think they're, that's really interesting.
That table's already full already.
Yeah.
That table's already pretty full.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's a, it's, it's volunteer. Yeah. Top them. Yeah, you opt in and you, you do it every year. And if you want to support housing, I gotta buy a license anyway. So. You know.
It's true.
Yeah.
It's got, it's got value.
The good news and bad news is the whole state's in a crisis, basically. And that's, that's bad news, but it's also good news is because they know they've got to start churning out some.
Yeah.
Some solutions and not just keep kicking the ball down the court. I mean, we're a million housing units behind, just that's all housing units. Yeah, that's not just, but and it's not going to get better. Um, yeah, and, and this is one way that we can take one small piece and say, okay, let us have a funding stream and we can do something on our own. So yeah, makes sense to me, but then I've been beat my head against that wall for a few years now. I just like Blake's help because like I said, I can't be in there at every committee meeting and at everything. And um, and he can pull me in when he says, hey, you need to be at this one or, you know. at every committee meeting and at everything, and, um, and he can pull me in when he says, hey, you need to be at this one, or, you know, so.
And could we discuss maybe further down the road? Broaden the scope if Leavenworth needs other things, like other types of.
And they, they're, they're willing to, to have that discussion as well. So, yeah, we've, we've mentioned that if there's other, even I mean, capital things that we've, we've talked about, and one of the things, you know, that's come up that we've been invited to, to address is help getting the, the road punched through, um, tightest to, to jump stick.
Yeah, I'm talking more like community, community recreation facilities that would benefit from the tourism revenue stream.
Yeah, I mean, I think they'd be open if the, if the council chooses to, you know, bring them on to, to do some other things, I guess.
That'd be great. Thank you. Thanks, Blake.
They definitely, you know, it's just again, using those connections, you know, and efficiently, so. Thank you, Blake.
Thank you, Blake.
Thanks, Blake.
Thank you, Blake.
I would I would entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the professional service agreement, Loadstar Partners, a lobbying firm to create a funding stream of affordable housing with the state.
Second. Everybody. Thank you. Moved by Jason, seconded by Zeke. It's nice to hear a bunch of seconds in the, in that. Uh, any other questions? Any from the, any comments in the audience? All right, all those in favor? Let me see your hands. As you unanimously. Thank you all. Appreciate that. Thank you, Blake.
Thank you all.
And those babies on.
Yeah, thanks.
Get some sleep.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start it. The next action item is a letter of interest from Joe Coleman LLC regarding the potential property exchange. Um, and before we get into that, I'm gonna spend a few minutes, um, just discussing and writing out this, because there has been a lot of chatter on the internet and a lot of things that aren't factual that are going out there. Um, a lot of rumors, a lot of misinformation. So I'm gonna spend a little time and go over how we're, we got to where we're at and exactly where we're at, and exactly what this proposal is before us tonight. Because I think there's just a lot of misunderstanding. Um, as, as, um, Karen had said, you know, it whether it was the top priority or second priority, it was up there in terms of getting a covered pool. That was one of the things that rose to the top in a recreational survey that was done a while back. Um, and so, uh, from that, the PRSA did a, a got a consultant to look into what that would be and uh, come up with some potential designs and all of that kind of stuff to see what that would look like. And then along with that came some of the projected costs. And then we've been surveying and hearing back, um, and while people still love the idea of a covered pool, they didn't love so much the idea of paying for a covered pool. That idea of, because it's awful darn expensive and would take more than one funding stream, you would probably be looking at some sales tax increase, um, as well as some property tax increase, um, and on and on and on. So, um, so the expense side, you know, even, even to replace and estimates were like eighteen to twenty-five million dollars, you know, to get a covered pool. Um, and you gotta understand, for a city to do anything, it's thirty percent more than it is for any private individual because of prevailing wage that it has to be paid. So anyway, that's just the reality. Just to replace a pool, which we know is gonna have to happen in the next three to five years, we've been told that, that even if we just want the exterior outdoor pool replaced, we're looking at three and a half to four million or more, but maybe by then. Um, so, that's, that's being said, we've got a, we've got a want that we want, but how to get there, right? It's, it's a difficult balancing act. Then I'm gonna just say, at a council retreat that we had a few weeks ago, one of the things that rose to this, the surface as a top priority for the council was to address the need for the Public Works Department. We've got Public Works is down by our sewer treatment plant. We know that sewer treatment plant at some point is gonna have to expand. If it has to expand, it's gonna expand into the Public Works area. So, you know, the dominoes start falling, we need more space for Public Works. Um, the council felt like a top priority was to try to, to, um, buy the old car wash, which is owned by Mr. Lynn. And to incorporate that into that Public Works campus, so for that future expansion. So that came out as a top priority. So we contacted Mr. Lynn and he said, yep, you can buy my property, I'll be glad to sell it to the city, I'd like the city to get that. But he said, I've got a better idea for you. He said, we know you need a pool. Um, it's too expensive. I got a proposal, I will swap you that facility down there at the car wash for the pool. And I will build you a covered pool for the community. Um, you would only have to give me what the PRSA currently receives in their taxes, so you don't have to increase it. You allow me to put that, you rent the space back for me, PRSA folks will get it. Their current common discounted for being residents. And I'll take over and run it and build it privately, because it won't cost me near as much as it would you. Now, that sounds way too good to be true. Right? But if that could be true, wouldn't you want your city to forget more details and to find out if that is a serious proposal? If you could get a win-win and get something, and believe me, the only way this would ever happen is if it guaranteed us an ongoing pool. This is not about giving a developer something that he can flip and turn and make something else out of. This is about getting our community a pool in a win-win kind of situation. Believe me, because my wife would, of forty-nine years, would divorce me if I took her pool away. She's right now is, is jonesing.
She's watching you, girl.
She, she is, she is teaching the little ones, um, how to swim and is loving it. It gets her grandma out of her. So she's loving that, she loves her lap swim, she loves her aerobics. I'm just saying, the only way this gets considered is if that does come down to getting us what we want in a pool. The only thing being considered tonight is not the land swap. So if you're coming to say, I don't think you should land swap, I don't think you, that's not what we're talking about tonight. What we're talking about tonight is, do we get more information and see if this really flushes out, if you can put some meat on the bones? I mean, somebody said that I was against it at the mayor's meeting. No, I said, we don't have any information. We don't know if this is a real proposal or not. What we're asking for is to, we gotta spend time and money to get the information to see if this could really get nailed down, and you get the attorneys involved to make sure all the Ts are crossed. And then, when that, if we, if it develops into something, then we come to the community and you'll have all the input, and you'll have big meetings, and we'll have opportunities to say, here's what the real proposal is now. We don't have a real proposed. We've got a concept that's just floating out there. So before you get too worked up, or, you know, don't give away a pool, or don't give away a all we're talking about is is there a potential to work with Mr. Lynn to get us a pool that would be a win, that wouldn't cost our, now, if I can save you some tax dollars, wouldn't that be a plus? I don't know. I mean, to me, it sounds too good to be true. I, I'll be honest, it sounds too good to be true, and we know that most things that sound too good to be true usually are. But let's find out. And the only way you can find out is to spend a little money and do it. So that's what this proposal is about. So if you wanna get up and speak, that's fine. But I would encourage you to speak about whether we should investigate or not, not whether we should swap or not, because that's not the issue tonight. It's whether we spend the time and energy and resources to find out if there's a real there, there. That make sense? So let's put off the idea of the swap until we have something to talk about in a real situation, because it may not ever come back here again. We may run and Mr. Lynn, who I know is listening in.
Right there. I mean, if you want more information from.
Well, and we'll, we'll get to that. I'm just doing the preamble here, because I, like I said, there's just so much chatter out there that I just felt like I wanted to kind of get things back on track here about what's really going on here. And then, and then we can talk about what this is really about. So again, if you're thinking swap, that's a further, that's a down-the-line discussion. And you'll have plenty of, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do something this big, like I said. I've been married forty-nine years, I'm not gonna risk it now, so we will get lots of published input when the time is right for us, but right now, I don't have enough info to give you. Mr. Lynn, please weigh in.
Yeah, we're here for you, Tom.
Okay, I, I just to clarify a couple of points. Number one, Carl never agreed to anything. Only thing he agreed to was to present it to the council so the public can hear it to, um, voice their opinion. Okay, and I saw it on Facebook, and my request is, please be civilized when you're criticizing Carl or the city council, because you voted them in, they're your neighbors, they're your friends, they represent you. And Matt Selby is very thorough. He is not gonna approve anything that's under the table, underhanded. I mean, trust me, he goes through everything, he crosses all, um, Ts and dots or Is. So while sitting here, I got a, a number from my engineer, says it costs twelve million dollars to build this, because it's a lot cheaper than the city building it. And while sitting here listening to it, I have another third option that just came up, that since everyone's so engaged right now, and everyone cares so much about it, which is a good thing, that a twenty million dollar pool, if the city builds it, we got five thousand residences. If it, um, if each one is allocated four thousand dollars, amortized over thirty years at six and a half percent interest, it's only twenty-five dollars a month. It's like building a backyard pool for four thousand dollars, okay? If we build it privately, the cost will go down to twelve million, which is only fifteen dollars a month. I don't have to build this pool, it saves me a lot of headaches, saves me a lot of time, which is great, no problem with it. The only difference I would make is, take the responsibility from the city, we funded ourselves, as I said, twenty-five dollars a month per person, and we have a board who will manage the pool, and we'll have an indoor pool twelve months a year. Now, if you can have a pool for twenty-five dollars a month per person, I would love to foot that bill. And I would love to pay for my share. And I agree with Carl, um, that at least he's open-minded enough to at least listen to the proposal. Nothing has been agreed upon, and it's a long road ahead. They, a long road for the city, for the residents, and for me. Okay, I'm getting too old for, you know, trying to build another pool or not, because I have always been engaged in pool, I swam, I played water polo through college, graduate school, and on and on and on. And I don't think we should deprive, um, our next generation that opportunity. Okay, we may create a couple Olympic swimmers, we have, um, um, we can have a varsity swim team, uh, who knows, right? And I think that sports is very part of education, and that's why, where I am, I'm here today. And all I ask of you is keep an open mind, I don't have to do it, we all can do it, it's not that expensive if we divide it up. And please be civilized when you're trying to criticize these people, because all they're doing is listening, that's all. There's no underhanded agenda, there's no poor swap, there's nothing. It's just an idea right now, as Mayor said. So I'll say that, and I'll leave it up to you guys, and now everyone's engaged, there's so many people there. Then they see what we can do to get a new pool, rather than, you know, what is wrong with everything, there's nothing wrong with everything. Do you want to get involved or not? If you want to get involved, right now, the cost is twenty-five dollars per person a month. Like, um, getting a car for four thousand dollars to amortize over thirty years, simple man.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom. Um, let's, let's get, let's see if we can get a motion on the table, and then we can get other inputs. So, somebody wanna move?
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a letter of intent for the property exchange between the city and Will Coman LLC.
Second. Motion moved by Marco, seconded by T-Bore. Other council questions, comments?
I have some comments. Um, first, I wanted to kind of ask the question, um, on the distinction of letter of interest versus letter of intent. Um, our action item is titled the letter of interest, but the document is titled letter of intent. Is there a discerning distinction between the two?
I think it's a typo on my part.
Yeah.
And would, and would there be one preferred over the other? Um,
I don't think there's legally, I don't think there's legally any, because it's clear in that, that this is an investigative tool to try to see if we can come up with an agreement, and it commits no one to anything that comes out of it. It's, it's, it's to give us the legal framework that we're both saying we're gonna start putting skin in the game, so we need to have some level of commitment. So this is defining, if you would, the bed rail, so to speak, of that discussion going forward, without any commitment to get to an arrival. And that was one of the things I know that Zeke brought up, is it said shall consider or may consider in versus, that sounds pretty fuzzy. But all that is, is saying, yeah, they may not consider, they may pull out and say, Will Coleman may say, sorry, as we go down this path, we, we're not dictating terms, we're starting a conversation about those. So it's a put in the may kind of language. Yeah, but again, as Mr. Lynn said, and as I've tried to say, this is just to start a process. It's, it's complicated when you get public-private entities, and we've got a PRSA that'll also be involved, so we've got we've kind of got a three-way dance here that's gotta get everybody in sync. So this isn't gonna be a simple thing. But as, as sometimes things that are worth doing are complicated and difficult. Yeah. So that's what we're kind of looking at.
Yeah, like Mr. Lynn said, our goal is to keep the community first.
So, sure, but I'd like you to come up so.
I, I still have a few things on my list.
Well, and, and we'll have plenty of time.
I understood the city.
So some council discussions.
One time they offered the city to buy the property. And if you, the city decided not to do it, because they have too much of the diesel and things in the ground, and it was gonna cost too much money to develop. Is that right?
There was concern of that, yes.
Right, so that, that could be the potential, that if we buy that property, we're gonna have to clear that.
That's part of the due diligence.
And that's part of the due diligence.
We, we walked away from buying it when it was originally sold to Tom Lynn, because of the potential for contamination from the rail yard across the street. We walked away.
Yeah, yeah.
This, this process, we could very well do a phase two environmental assessment.
I'm just working on a grant right now. Right, and we're working actually on a grant that would cover the cost of doing that due diligence, but yeah, that is still a question.
Yeah, Mayor, maybe Ann, maybe we should, and a lot of people that want to talk.
Sure.
Um, there's, there's some numbered items, uh, as far as conceptual terms in this letter. Um, and one of the things that I would like to see added, if the council would agree, is a cost-benefit analysis associated with this, um, project. I know that we've got feasibility and uh, valuation adjustment and that sort of thing listed on this, um, on the terms, but I would like to see a very specific cost-benefit analysis.
And, and my only, my only pushback on that is that that analysis will probably scare Mr. Lynn away, because he's the one that's gonna be costing, um, and the, and the benefit to him is not gonna be near as great. and the, and the benefit to him is not going to be near as great. But I'm just saying.
I, I think we both, I, I think both parties can gain from having this type of work completed. Um, I'm not interested in going, I'm not interested in moving forward if we don't know what we're getting into. So.
Well, we'll definitely know. Yeah.
I have comments too.
Sure.
I might read mine because this is very emotional for me. Um, I want to know why we need a legal document. Can we not discuss a land swap without a letter of intent? I'm obviously having a trust issue with the suggested process. I would like to see us first explore how we might expand our public works area. It seems we hire a consultant for every move we make. Why not do that first in this instance? Maybe the area we currently have can be redesigned and repurposed to accommodate what is needed. How much public works property do we currently have and where it is, is it all located? Maybe that large public uh, works workhouse across from the public works area or the city parks building can be redesigned or the recycle center can be relocated. I think the loss of the pool, the Lions Club building and that park area, which is a vital part of this community will be greatly missed. And the parking lot made into a parking structure, where I'm guessing a hotel would further take parking spots away for residents and visitors. For what? Another big tourist hotel? What about the people who live here and all of us in the Parks and Recreation Service area? Doesn't anyone get to have their say or have time to even process the information before the council signs a legal document? Once it's gone, it's gone. I've read quite a bit about letters of intent. There's a lot of little glitchy details that can occur. I believe it would be a travesty to sign a letter of intent without our community's opportunity to process and comment. Respectfully submitted, Sharon Waters. Well, I'm guessing that if, if, and, and when, when Mr. Lynn respectfully, when Mr. Lynn first came to the council two meetings ago, he said that um, he would like to give us the um, uh, car washing area for the pool and he would build the pool for twenty years. And I thought to myself, and then what happens after twenty years? That, you know, he, and then in this other paper, the letter of intent, it talks about the parking lot being a, a gra, uh, what are those kind of garages called?
Parking garage.
Parking garage. And it, and, and what would that be for? Um, and if, and it mentions the Lions Club Park, it makes it the bathrooms, the um, the little building that, that swim team built on the, in the pool site. It mentions all these things and it's, it sounds like clear to wherever the boundary is between the city and the, um, you know, the rest of the area there. So my mind says, sounds like a hotel with a um, parking uh, place for the people that are in our hotel. I don't know that for a fact, but that's what it sounds like to me. And um, I, I guess being here for so many years, I feel like I guard, I kind of guard the area and I don't want it turned into anything else. That's, that's where we go. That's where we have our family reunions. We have picnics. We sit and watch swim meets. I mean, all that stuff would, as far as I can see, would be gone.
No. And, and I'm just saying, I, because we wouldn't sign it. I don't think the council has the intent of it becoming anything other than a.
Why do we have to sign anything? Why can't we just talk about this?
Because we can't spend the money if we want to investigate. Right. All this doesn't even make sense. And I see exactly where you're coming from. I mean, I have ideas about it too, but it's just a legal form that allows staff and the mayor to start looking into this and asking legal, which is going to be one of the biggest components of this. Can this be done, number one? Should this be done, number two? And what does it look like if it does? Nobody here is saying this is. We're all, we all got hesitations. I do.
Yeah.
And this is Carl. It's too good to be, you know, you've heard that, I don't, your whole life.
But it's just an option.
Just, I know, but it's what is too good to be true mean? Um, how do we know it's true?
Well, that's what we're trying to find.
Well, I know, do we have to have a legal document to do it?
Yeah, we do. We do need a legal document.
Decide a legal document? The legal document is not, it's a legal document that doesn't commit us.
I know, but I looked up the, uh, letter of, uh, whatever this thing is. I looked at letter of intent, thank you. I looked it up all, all through the internet, everything. And there's all kinds of little places where it shows where you may have to be stuck with that letter of intent. So it scares me.
Sharon, if, so, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I get it because I've spent time on Google as well, uh, looking at this, but my understanding, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, is a letter of intent means two very different things in the business world as opposed to the municipal world. In the business world, when you've gotten to the point for a letter of intent, you've done your due diligence, you've done your homework, you're farther along in that process. If you're in a city, if you're us, that letter of intent starts the due diligence process because we can't spend a cent on legal to talk, have Tom working on things to start doing your due diligence. It starts the due diligence process. It doesn't, it doesn't conclude that and it's different for cities as opposed to businesses. And I think that's what was tripping me up. Am I on the right track here?
Yeah, exactly. We need something that says we're gonna move forward and investigate. So either, either we say it's not even worth investigating. Tom, forget it. We'll just buy that property for the, the public works, which is fine, which is originally what we were going to do. And then we just set the pool aside. It'll stay as it is unless we decide to spend a lot more money to, to, to get an indoor or at some point to spend money to rebuild the outdoor, but it'll be on us to do. Or again, all we're doing is saying, is there another way? Is there a way that it could be where he would want, Mr. Lynn would want to take that on himself and, and still get us a pool and we will make sure that it's not, it's not just twenty years. I promise you, we won't go with this.
I don't buy it. I just don't buy it.
That's fine. You can be skeptic. You can be skeptical.
Don't buy it.
But the, the point is, that's the options that we have. We can, we can say, and you know, I guess what I would ask the community again. If this could happen and you wouldn't be asked to contribute extra tax dollars to get it, what would your feelings be towards a city that says we're not even going to consider that? We're gonna, we're gonna just put it all on our own residents to, to come up with those taxes to build whatever needs to be built?
We have a Parks and Recreation Service area and we aren't building the Taj Mahal. We just want a covered pool to swim in all year round.
Other pools are not cheap.
Not even sitting there with cheap, but I don't think they're millions and millions of dollars like you were talking about a covered pool. If it, for the rest of it, eight lanes, all these other things, it would cost a lot more. But that's not what the community asked for.
The kids.
Well, we'll, we'll get out here. Just, just let's, let's let the council get their two cents and then we'll get out to you.
But so I just have two more things, then I'll be done. Um, the first thing is I, I share my concern with Sharon, I, because it just has to get out. The twenty year, this needs to be in perpetuity.
Yeah, no.
Because twenty years goes by in a blink of an eye.
Right.
I, I have figured that out now. So.
I agree with you there. I'm, I'm, I wouldn't create any affordable housing for twenty years.
Right, there's. And then the other thing that I see here is, you know, the, the final sentence before that we look forward to taking this first step. Either party may cease negotiations at any time for any reason. That is the overarching umbrella. There are no yeah buts. Better with that. That is, that's the end all be all. If it doesn't look good, if it smells fishy, we're out.
We can be out, he can be out. Either one of us can say, this isn't going anywhere. So then we're back to nothing. And that's fine. Anybody else here before we?
Yeah, I think I'd like to say something. Um, first off, um, this is going to go to a community forum once we have the details, we know something about it. But it's like the, the community's being sidelined here. It's like you're out of the equation. But right now, we don't have any information that you can talk about. We just don't have it. And the way we get it is the letter of intent and we find out the details. That's the only way we're going to get it. We do the due diligence, we do the inspection, whatever it takes, we find out what he really wants. And then we can come, once we get it and it still sounds good, then we take it to the community and then you have your input and then you talk about it. And it can still be, it's still an off ramp. There's, there's lots of off ramps on this agreement. So it isn't like one deal is done.
Right.
I know people what's out on the, on the social media, I'm glad I don't spend any time out there because it's ridiculous. I mean, it is sick. And it's a lot of conjecture. It's a lot of no face to face stuff. Nothing of that. No, you're not accountable to anything and you can say anything you want. I'm glad I don't go there. But this allows us that option to get the information. And then we talk about it and then we take it to the community and say, okay, here's what it is. Now what do you think? And you can still say, forget it. So, all right, we forget it. But we'd be remiss, I feel, as a community, as a council member, if we didn't take this first step and get the information for you and just not, and walk away from it now. I don't think that's responsible, using community funds well, serving the community. That's not my idea of representing you. So I certainly, certainly, uh, surely support this motion uh, to get there. And then we go farther. It's going to be a long process. So that's my sense.
Mayor, um, I've been on the PRSA for five years and uh, this started with meetings with committee members at Good Mood Food. We were talking about doing this, this recreational needs assessment to find out what the public wanted. And it was a huge lift on behalf of the PRSA in the city to spend money on a consultant that did a statistically valid survey of our PRSA. The number one thing was year round pool, okay? That was a pretty big eye opener. The multi-use trails is a close runner up. I know the county and Tred and Evergreen, there's a lot of groups working on trails. Everybody wants more trails. I think we all agree to that. The pool is big and complicated and we knew that. Then we went and spent seventy or eighty thousand dollars, went through a competitive process, hired what we thought was the best firm out there to come up with alternatives for our climate. And a, a pool or three options that were appropriate for this location. We ruled out a dome structure for aesthetics, longevity and the labor and maintenance to take it down and put it up every year. We ruled out the cheapest option. If you guys want a yellow dome, plastic dome covering our downtown pool, raise your hand.
I do.
Okay, two people want that. That was a rhetorical question.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't want that here. It's ugly and it would last ten years. It might collapse under snow. We don't want it. So the PRSA made the executive decision to look at something that would last a long time, that would match our theme and be a delightful place to spend time. Um, now we're at this point where we're looking at funding options that are more or less infeasible. And I say that because we know that the public doesn't want to pay for it out of their pockets. So it puts us in a really tough position. The PRSA has been working on this single initiative for five years with public feedback along the whole way. And now we're at this point where I'm hearing the public say they don't want the thing that they've asked for. Because we're probably not going to get it with lodging tax. We're not going to get it with property tax or sales tax and even grants would only pay a small portion. So I think that throughout this option right now would be probably the death blow for the pool, honestly. So if that's what you want, you know, we're here to serve you, but I also question that logic at this point. We don't even have the diagnosis. We don't even have the feasibility for all things. So I, I question that. I question that decision on, on the public's behalf.
I'm going to make a final point too, to what Blake said quickly to finish our council discussion. The gentleman who is here talking about lobbying with the state, he told us we had a super valuable resource in tourism. We have close to three million a year come in. And using them as an economic fuel to fund the pool instead of putting it on a tax burden on us, whatever we build, they're going to use. We, we can't be like, oh no, tourists allow it, just, just locals. It's never going to happen. And for instance, the adventure park at the end of the street, the roller coaster, they get no tax subsidy. And they're paying off their seven million dollar investment just with use fees from the tourists. Which I feel like we should be doing that with anything we build. And if whatever we build has to be marketable to tourists so they can use it on the weekends and we get it for free or low cost during the week, because that's exactly what's going to happen. Whatever we build. Then I've been working on it with Jason in the PRSA since two thousand eighteen and I'm the one who brought in the pool dome proposal back then for about half a million dollars, which was pretty doable, but it came with the caveat, you know, we had to rebuild the building to be winterized and all these other things. So there's a lot involved there because our kids, who I speak to all the time when I'm substitute teaching, they want a high school swim team. When, if you know any of these kids who swim during our summer swim league, they're champions. They deserve a ladder to college scholarships. And that's my primary goal, to get our eight lane pool in there and make it competitive so we can have varsity swimming. So our kids have another way to get into college cheaper. And then of course, if you build all the other cool stuff that they want, I think it would sell great, you know? And then that would pretty much pay for most of it. So that's my big kick. I don't want to put a burden, a tax burden on us. I want our visitors to pay for it. Like Blake said, we have a huge economic engine. We should be riding that horse.
Why don't you come up and? I'm sorry, you gotta come up. They all like to see your lovely face.
See two things here. So I'm giving you guys say what we're going to do is we're going to get some information. And I think that makes sense. And then I hear him say four grand. I'm a retired high school teacher. I can't put out four grand, twenty five dollars a month per pool. So I'm concerned about what he's saying and what you're saying. I'm, I'm in favor of what you're saying. We should look into this. But if he's already figured out how much it's going to cost us as, you know, people who live here. And I'm, and I'm thinking, well, maybe we should look into this. But I think we should look into this. I just, what his presentation was just was unsettling and I'm, I'm with Sharon. I just really feel like this is our pool and sure tourists are going to use it. I mean, they come here and they're just like they used the roller coaster. I mean, that wasn't our idea. We just wanted to have a roller coaster. I mean, it used to be supposed to say, no, there is, but I think the pool is a powerful, this is our town. I'd literally want to say, you know, I wasn't born there like, you know, like some people were.
I wasn't about my house.
This is, this is our pool. And, and we'll share with the tourists, for Pete's sake, as they bring their money in. And, and when they're walking down the street with their bags at, say, oh, thank you very much. Although I can't go downtown on the weekends. But I just think what you're saying is, I think the majority of people here are in favor of looking into this. It just, but he's just scared. He, so.
Will you remind everybody who you are, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm talking Elliot. I'm on West Street.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks Claudia. Thank you Claudia.
Race, race, race.
So, hello, um, council and administrations and Mayor, my name is Janessa Ruckel. I live at three oh four Whitman Street. Um, and I'm just wondering if um, there is a way this can be considered without loss, without the city having to lose the land? I mean, is, are, what, what ways can we explore so that, sure, maybe there can be a public private partnership? Um, but I, I think that we are really going to be losing something that, that means a lot to everybody. I mean, this elicited a very visceral reaction for a reason. And I think it's a lot more time to, um, the city's retention of that real estate ownership. More so than anything that has to do with the way the, the pool would go all the way to agree it should be in perpetuity instead of just twenty years. But I think, um, I think, um, the, the concerns this water rates are, are very um, are legitimate and it did seem to resonate with the community. And I think, you know, uh, maybe something like that at one of the other parcels that the city owns could be a way to do that. But I think just something right in the heart of Leavenworth, you know, where you know, it's a lot more than just a pool. Um, and making it into an aquatic facility is just, it's, it's I, I, I think it's something we should consider the way that it would forever transform our town. And then if we lose, and if we lose people ownership, we lose control of everything. And anyway, that's the extent of my sentiment. Thank you for listening.
Hi, I am Melissa Merson. Um, I actually live in East Manachee, but I come up and watch my friend's daughter, who is a first time swimmer, win a bunch of races. So I'm kind of a uh, I'm from here originally. Uh, I'm from here originally. I spoke last time when we were talking about swim team last year. And I actually remember, uh, Mr. Lynn from that same conversation. The one thing I would say, um, what she said. Is just in terms, let me start this by saying, I come and I paid for a membership and I live in East Wenatchee. We would gas this much. Because Wenatchee City Pool is closing the day of championships. And they're not even staying open because they have, they have a whole pool having to fix things and stuff. The East Wenatchee Pool. Uh, I just, I don't know anyone to go there. So I come up here because there's a community aspect to this. I take Sharon's water robotics class, by the way. You know, so we just have a good time. Um, one of the things that I see and my daughter did swim team and our friends and. Like they were saying, there's really a lot of great athletes. In this town. In fact, two of them, we walked to Cashmere because they live in East Wenatchee now. So it breaks my heart to see the beginners. Go and swim there, but, um, there's a lot of opportunity there. And the biggest thing I think is. Uh, some friends of mine that lived in Illinois. They were telling me about how Wisconsin, imagine freezing cold, tons of snow. They have tons. Of water parks that are all enclosed and it's a whole thing. Now. I don't think you can fit that in this little tiny spot. I mean, just looking at it, there's barely enough parking. That one, that spoiler story. So I don't know exactly the status of the land and what they can use up at the Osborne property. But I know there's pickle boards. And I honestly just don't come up and hang out in that spot. So I mean, I don't wanna cut, um. Mr. Lynn out of the deal because I think he could make that a really viable option. And the twenty-five dollars a month, I get, that's money. And that's if you wanna do that and hope there'd be a variety of rates and stuff. But at the same time, that's it for Starbucks streets. So I'm like, oh, I'd be in, no problem. And I would drive up and do that. And spend the time with my friends and see their kids swim. I just love that. I. Grew up when it was the old pool, when it was a little rectangle with a really strange long. Flywood looking, what was that? Diving board, walking around, you know? So I mean, like, be nice, be good. I'm more back, but you know. Want to say my grandpa or maybe my aunt was on the pool committee years back. When they were going and, oh, look at the most cyclone. And like, Brad has a great facility. And so, I mean, I don't, I think that's a great idea. You, you will get the money if it's indoor from all tourists, totally. But at the same time, we do wanna make it, you know, kind of a benefit for our locals and stuff, but I would be all in. It's just. I don't think that space is gonna work. So maybe start figuring that whole thing out, get it going if you can do it out there and then. Do something else with that land once that you, if you can use that place for a new spot, you know? Anyways, thanks.
Thank you. Yeah.
You know. My name's Jan Yowich and I live at two oh one. Um, I think that you guys are missing something. And what you're missing is that Lion's Club Park. And that swimming pool is Leavenworth's treasure. It's Leavenworth's treasure. And it is the place that community members primarily, not tourists, hang out. They go to the breakfast on, on alternate Sundays. Families come to have picnics and they go to the pool, one of the most beautiful pools I have ever swam in. And when you swim laps in that pool. And you look and you see those mountains, you, you know, this is the most gorgeous pool you've ever been in. That property is the city's, it's a treasure. It should never be given over to somebody else. Who says they're gonna give you an aquatic center. I grew up in the Midwest a long, long time ago. I'm one of the old people here and I wanna tell you. You can put enclosures over pools. And it extends the life of the pool for the full year and then you take the cover off. And there you are in the beautiful weather and you use it all summer long with, without the cover. It can be done. This property is a treasure and. You should not be considering trading this. So that someone else can build an aquatic center. And the community is speaking about this and they're not crazy ideas of us. People are passionate about this that are not, this is not, these are not alarmist people. They're just telling you, this is a treasure. The property is a treasure for this community. Do not, do not. Do not give this up. It's a mistake.
Um, I'm not speaking for or against the pool. All I'm gonna say, I mean, this is amazing. It's amazing to have the community show up. It's amazing to have all state of people here. And honestly, this is what every city council meeting should be. They know what's going on. And it is amazing when you show up and you're like, oh, they're talking about, uh, you know. What the employees have been paid for. I didn't know that before I looked up the agenda. I mean, these are things, you know, I had a project about seven years ago, so I started cringing to meetings. I was just blown away at all the stuff they were talking about. And I got to know each of the council members. And you know, the classic sort of, you can never come to a meeting is, all they care about is tourists. And when you come to these meetings, you find out that is not, so they, they care about. The community that's here, the infrastructure that we have to look forward to and things like that. So all I ask. Come to these meetings. Get on, I type in, I do it, you know, um, and I will, I will tell you, I'm on the planning commission. And I wish people would come to our meetings. And when we get people who come to our meetings. It's because somebody posted something on Facebook. Honestly, I'm gonna give you stirred up some information that is not at least accurate. And they come and then it's funny because they're geared to know us and then we start sitting there asking questions and they go, oh, okay. And you know, you just type in cityofleavenworth.com, pulls you to the city website, look at the agenda. And then you don't even have to come here. You can get on. So all I'm saying is what I heard tonight. And that it don't mean that because I'm hearing fear, fear of change. And I thought, how you explained this when you began was, let me explain what we're at. That this is truly an acquisition gathering. So. You know, some of you saying that, uh, I think this is a treasure and that we shouldn't give up. The Lions Club Park, you know. Maybe that's part of what goes into the conversation as they are, are working. And I will say. Mr. Lynn has a lot of ideas. He's always thinking. And I almost cringed when he gave a little thought of what he was thinking, but like, that's not where they're at. They're not there yet, but I know some, some of them grab onto that and go, see, that's what we said. We don't want that. We're not from everyone. So all I'm saying is. You know. The, the city, everybody, I mean, there was a great survey when it came out. I know people answered it and the answer was people want it year-round and go to the pool. For so many reasons. Water rotis, wouldn't it be nice to go in Little January? You know, I don't know if Sharon wants to do it over here, but you know what? I mean, people like to know and they don't. You know, we're kind of limited a lot of times to, you know, when schools are. So people said they wanted it and they're looking at options. And so all I can say is just. It's rare that people get online and see that this is gonna be discussed and come down and listen to it. But be careful what you're listening to. I mean, it's, it's, it's almost cliche now to say it's circle media, but seriously. Should come here and get the information. So that's all I want to say.
Thank you. And again, I, I would have to say, we all know it's a treasure. You know, don't, don't divide the community into those who think of it as a treasure and those who don't. That is not, that's, that's not what this is about. No, but, no, but I'm just saying, we all see it as a treasure.
Really?
It's how, yes, it's how to maintain that treasure for the long term. It's, it's maintaining it for the long term.
We can do it.
Stacy Barnwell.
It's a dump.
Um. I watched social media and. There is a bit of jealousy of the poor, less stuff out there and people who, I mean, it was horrible. I tried to make a few good comments. From now, read, think about it from the beginning. So. The, uh, I wanna just say, very alarmist and I will not disagree with you on that. I swim, if I didn't swim and go to water rotis, I'd do that. So it's how important to me and. Um, with me. You know, we've had this treasure forever. We can maybe backstroke the, the mountains. You can see the, the people flying over the mountain. It's just amazing. It's such a beautiful place. But I think the thing that I noticed over the last few weeks, uh, just watching everybody go through this and. Having conversations at swim team in the morning and, you know, it's just been a big couple of weeks. Um, what has struck me the most profoundly is that. In the adventure park piece, which I, I, I'm sorry to, to talk about again. But we, as a community, lost our voice. We couldn't talk about it because it was private property. We lost our sense of agency, which is incredibly important in a small town. We need that. We have that. That's what you live in a small town for. That's why we're here. We know each other. We care for one another. I don't think there's anybody here that likes hearing that, you know, that there's union, non-union and they will know what our place pays for. And I think I'm. Imaginated by the council. So. We need to find our agency again. And I don't know how that will happen. But I think that's what we're seeing. I think that's the him and the vile behavior. In the mayoral, uh, phrase. I was just appalled with the way. People spoke and saddened. And I think that's what it is. So I saw common civility and kindness and we all love her. Especially. Love and your little darling, Grace. Amazing. So, but the biggest needs, I forgot this, I'm sorry. Um, I'm gonna use a piece. Is that what we're looking at is safety and we all know that. Sharon knows that. She's been reading this forever. The river, when a pool is closed. We have people drowning in the river, a lot more. And, and I don't know the numbers. I wish I had them to like slap them down, but somebody here knows those numbers.
That's why Dr. Hopkins originally made the pool. He was a doctor in town and he was sick and tired of seeing kids drown in the river. So he proposed a pool. That's why it's called the Hopkins.
Yeah, and so I know you guys know that's something that we are saying, but it's, that is beyond beauty. It's beyond treasure. It's beyond. Even the land, which I also love. It is safe for children. It's swim lessons. It's, it's having public, public safe kids for. For future.
Fear. I hear fear of loss. Fear of change. I hear mistrust of the institutions and the processes. The adventure park affirms that lack of trust. Fear, mistrust, and whatever else you wanna add. Those can be addressed if this council is allowed to proceed or getting information. And we can. Trust them to. Share that information and to hear what I'm saying, what we're saying. And to make the decisions according to working together. But the first step and the important step to alleviate some of this expletive fear and mistrust. Is to let them go ahead and find out what's possible, what isn't possible, and then with combined input, make those decisions. Not a railroad. But a mutual decision-making process.
Thank you. Thanks, Alex.
I'm finally got it. I'm Ken Yowich. I live in two oh one, Ben. That's my local currys. Um, uh, I'm hearing that you are, you being told, the council being told, you have two options. One is authorize this letter of intent or abandon this concept. I don't think that's correct. You've got some other options. At, at bare minimum. You should send this letter of intent back and change the title to what you're talking about and that's a letter of interest. Words have been, there's a difference between interest and intent. Why would you send a letter of intent if you don't have intent? Okay, number one, you can do that. That's bare minimum. Number two, pass a resolution, say, we want the administration to look into this more. What are they gonna do? Take it to legal and see if that's sufficient for the administration to do more. That's another option. The third option though, and in my mind, the best option, tell Mr. Lynn, go back. Give us a solid proposal and then we'll do our analysis. At this point, all you've got is these ideas thrown around. With nothing to really bite into. You're gonna spend a bunch of money looking into these wild ideas. Have Mr. Lynn submit a proposal telling you exactly what he's gonna do, exactly what he wants from the city. And exactly what you're gonna get out of it. And then you've got something to talk about and then you've got something to study. So there's three options other than what you're being told tonight and that is sign this or abandon.
Good evening, everyone. Um. My name is Becky Speedo and I live at two two five Off State Street. And I am really just, just from some social media. Every word I've said out there has been a bomb in and every word I've said not.
Oh, excuse me, Becky, I can't hear.
I'm, I'm one of the folks that have made comments on social media. And everything that I've said on social media is cracked and cannot be reviewed because. If we're going to make comments on social media, we need to make sure that they are in fact factual. Um, but here's that face-to-face that you requested. And I, I do agree with you. I, it, this is our first time to have face-to-face. So I'm certainly providing that and I always will. A concern I have is regarding councilmen, council member of Rio. Nobody gets my last. Um, when Mr. Lynn was about to talk. He was, council member Rio says, we're here for you, Tom.
Yep.
No, we're not. We should not be here for anyone except the community.
He had his hand raised, is what I meant.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it didn't mean we're supporting him implicitly. I know him personally and it's not a conflict of interest because I don't receive any compensation. But he had his hand raised and he had every right to speak like every one of you and that's all I said.
Oh, great, great, great presentation. Another thing to clarify is that there's a misunderstanding and I've heard several council members. Comment that this is a required document in order to proceed forward. There is no precedent in case law that requires this document. Be presented and certainly not be signed in order for any kind of consideration or due diligence. Due diligence can be simply looking into things. If there's a fee for something, a cost. Uh, for example, having a feasibility study, uh, done, then council can simply just bring a motion before the council and request. That fees be allocated to that particular party. There is no document that needs to be signed tonight. Or anytime down the future when we're exploring anything. Now, if council or the city does say that this is a precedent, I would like to have citation. For that case law made public because there is no, uh, case law. That says that this is required, a required document to, or to even consider. Now, I don't know this number that just spoke. Um, I haven't met him before, but he's absolutely right. You can look into these things. You don't, this is not a do this or we don't get a pool, like any type of pool. It's, this isn't required. Councilwoman Waters is correct. Letters of intent, letters of interest are slippery slopes. They can go sideways and they do. It's not unheard of. They go sideways and then you have to value your way out of them. When it's not necessary in the first place, you shouldn't be doing it. Because you don't ever go down a possible slippery slope when it's not necessary. And again, this would case law your, councilwoman Waters is absolutely correct. This isn't needed. Some of the other comments I've heard, but this is a requirement in order to just explore the interest. It is not only a requirement in business or administrative. It's simply not. That's a misunderstanding and it's not necessary to have that document go forward. This document should be just rejected in its entirety. It's not necessary. If you guys wanna explore something, then explore it. And bring the motion before the council of, we would like to have this money, whatever the nonsense, allocate it for a feasibility study or whatever it is you want to explore. In your process of understanding whatever that's being presented. Another thing, a comment that was made by someone, it is incumbent upon Mr. Lynn. To bring this, uh, study forward and to present his, um. Kind of think of it as, whatever he wants is incumbent upon him to bring that to the council. It is not incumbent upon the council to say, well, let's, let's explore this, let's figure out this, figure out that. No, this is revolting. It's incumbent upon him to bring that to the council, council. And then the council takes that and step up exploring it. It is, you're putting the cart before the horse. And it's just not appropriate at all. It doesn't even make sense legally. It doesn't even make common sense. And there's a misunderstanding that this is a requirement in order to explore. And there's a misunderstanding that this is a requirement in order to explore it. For example, this city council explores a lot of things already. And you bring a motion before the council and you say, we'd like to spend this kind of money to look into this. You guys are doing it all the time. You've been doing it for decades and decades and decades. Nothing has changed. You do not need a letter of interest, a letter of intent. You don't need that to go forward. That entire document should be stripped. It should not be continued forward. If you want to consider or continue to consider the possibility of a public and uh. Uh, public, private joint venture for operation, then consider it. But you don't need a legal document to do that and you've been doing that for decades already. This document that's before the court, uh, not the court, doing my work. This document that's before the council is inappropriate at best. It should not be here. Fear, that fear is driving this and everybody's afraid of change. I disagree. I don't think we're afraid of change. Change happens every day when we wake up. It's what that change is that can cause fear, not change itself. This is a big deal and that's a comment I may not like. This is a big deal, our community pool. That's where the fear is coming from. People are afraid of change is what that changes. Sir, you have questions?
I have a question. First off, there's other people behind you that want to speak. Okay. No, they're on the screen, but I just, so. So you've given us some legal advice and I'm just asking, what's your experience as a, as a lawyer, as court law?
So I am not a lawyer. But I worked in the field of law for down in my thirtieth year.
But do you give legal advice to other people?
I do not. And that's why I said if the attorney for the city was going to provide a case law, then I would like that to be public and cited. Uh, citation of case laws or something for everyone to be able to go and review to see through it. And that's why I need that.
Wouldn't there be case law if a letter of intent or a letter of interest went before the courts and there's a Supreme Court decision made? If there is no case law, maybe that speaks to the inertness. Of a letter of intent or a letter of interest. If it hasn't been tested by the courts, then what, what's there to fear?
I would be stunned if something had not been tested by, and that's the spirit part. So I have a screen part of what you're talking about.
I would rather not get into a debate about, we were given this document by our legal counsel. Which we depend on for legal advice as the step to take. So that is why we are taking this step as a preliminary step. And it gives us all the off ramps we need to get the information. So I agree that I would rather take advice from the attorney that we're paying for legal advice. And the document that they give us.
Absolutely.
And not some. Buddy who just feels like we shouldn't need it. Okay?
So absolutely true. So the one thing I'd be request that if there is presence from your name, please cite the case law. Thank you.
And let's look at, we've got some people and what I request is if you're able to, if you could turn on your cameras. And then we can call on you and quite frankly, the one in the corner, who is that? Because I can't read from here.
You hear me?
Thank you for having you guys.
Okay, thank you, Alice.
Yeah, hi. Hi, I'm a, a member of the community. Uh, my, my kids and I and my wife are at the pool almost every single day. I just wanted to provide feedback on the specific proposal, which is. Should we move forward with a letter of intent? And I think my answer is a clear no. And the reason is, I, I just don't feel like that any proposal that would turn over public property to a private entity. Uh, should be considered for the city of Leavenworth. Like, there's a lot of talk of our pool versus their pool. Tourist money versus how we fund that. Under no circumstance where we sell public property to a private entity, will that be our pool? That will be Mr. Lynn's pool. I would rather take scoped down changes to the pool to make it viable in just the summer. Than to have a full aquatic center that we can use year, year round that is not actually owned by the city. So in, in my opinion, I would not move forward with any investigation, any use of taxpayer funds. To proceed with a letter of intent because I just don't think any proposal for me is a, you know, is a viable option. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can you turn the sound up?
Can we? I don't know. Howie?
Haley.
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 I'm sorry. It's still muted.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted here. Can you all hear me? Okay, I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person, but I'm glad we had the Zoom option. We've been moving and it's been crazy. Um, I am a community member and I just wanted to, to put in my two cents here. I'm also the president of the swim team. And I'm not here representing the swim team in any way, but I did want to speak to. Um, Tom Lynn's character and he is also a community member. And this gentleman has been working really hard to get us a pool. And we've been working really hard and our PRSA has been working really hard. We've all been working hard to get a better pool in this city that actually functions and serves everyone. So. As far as I'm concerned, I would appreciate the letter of intent being signed so we could at least look into it. And we could at least comment and find out more information. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Harry.
And. Ryan and Kim. I see a hand. You got a camera? Or you're muted?
Sorry, my camera's not working. Local tail has gone down for me again tonight. So maybe we need to start addressing local tail in our community. Yeah, so I apologize. So, um. In my course of business and what I do in my job, I deal with letter of intents every day. And so, and it's a practice for um, for my client, unnamed client, that we never sign them. And they are, because, because they're not binding. And so it's just, it's, you know, you come to terms, I negotiate it, I negotiate in their side, we come to terms. If either side wants to sign, that's great. If they don't, it's great. Then we go to an agreement. But it's just kind of a letter of understanding of what we want to do. And so I, I've heard and maybe I need more clarity. It sounds like the city can't start spending money unless they sign this document. But yet, I just saw recently an appraisal was done on the car wash property. Which is part of this letter of intent or letter of interest, letter of intent. And so if we can't spend money, how are we spending money on appraisals and other work that's been done and legal services? So I guess I would just like, and it doesn't have to be right now, but further clarification on, does funding. Actually have to be contingent on this being signed. And again, we can back out of this at any time. I mean, there's no question. I guess the second question would be, the words in the document are may and possible. If this is really for a pool, I think those words need to be removed. And actually, Mr. Lynn, who I've never met before, I appreciated him reaching out to me independently by a messenger on Saturday. Even made a comment that those were probably mistakes. Those words shouldn't have been removed and those would be refined when a final agreement's done. So I think that we really need to have clarity in this document. If it is going to be signed. What is the intent? Not may improbable. Is a pool going to be built under terms that can be agreed to? Um, again, I just, I think that it's just cart before the horse so far. And the document just seems like it needs more clarity on what's actually going to happen. And if the city actually needs to sign it before they can start spending the money. So I appreciate your guys' time on this.
Yeah, what's your last name?
Tobiason, T O B I A S O N. Yep, and I live in Leavenworth.
Yeah, I, I recognize your name, but I just from Kim, I couldn't tell and we just need it for our.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, anybody? I've not seen any other hands up there. Anybody else up?
Mr. Lynn's hands.
Tom.
Oh, Tom.
Again, just his hand.
I saw Tom a minute ago, just a hand raised. Tom?
Okay, um, the reason why we said twenty years because Sharon asked that question last time. And that's just due to the number twenty years out there because that's not set in stone. I figure I'm not going to be around after twenty years anyway, so I just threw that number out there. Okay? Second of all, the letter of intent, when that was not initiated by me, was initiated by the city so they can start a conversation. You know, you can change anything over there. It's just needs, it's, it's, as far as I'm concerned, it's not binding anyway. And so you can take anywhere you want. That's also fine. And um, third, the last comment I want, I want to make, which is probably not very pleasant. Is that I saw a lot of social media comments, which is a very unkind to the city, to the council or to me. And part of it was from Becky who spoke right before then. She wrote that article three days after she demanded sixteen hundred dollars from me to pay for the sign that, that was stolen. She demanded.
I've never asked anything of you.
Oh, I, I got proof of that. So this Becky just go back. She said, I, she said, she said, I need sixteen hundred dollars to replace the sign that all. And then she requests a couple of other payment forms that is on a borderline of. I have.
Quiet.
It isn't recorded.
I have text messages. I'm going to be in town tomorrow. If you want, I'll show you all the text messages from her camp. Okay? And she actually loved that idea at the beginning until I refused to give her the money. And that is the fact. I have text messages. So that, so if you want a mayor who's unethical. And already practicing something that's borderline illegal, vote for Becky. That's all I can say.
Um, Karen Francis McWhite, you've got your hand up.
Uh, hi neighbors, um, live over her building on Mountain View, um. Community member. I, I guess the only question I have is if the letter of intent isn't. Authorized today, um. And what is the threshold of your spend that you, you feel comfortable like committing to? Uh, because clearly you can spend on some aspects of this. So it sounds like you need this letter to. For more flexibility or for maybe going over a certain threshold. I mean, that's just, this is what I'm not sure of. Like. If you don't sign it, then does that mean nothing can happen? Or there's just limits to um, how much you can spend um, without a letter of intent? That's my, that's all.
And quite frankly, I don't know um, about that. I'll, I'll tell you that it's typical and I know that the, the legal reason is because we're dealing with another entity. So it's entity to entity is, is the framework that the attorney gives us is to deal with. These letters of intent or interest or whatever you want to call to begin these processes. And to move that forward. Um, so. You know, what, what is, I mean, eventually if we're going to be dealing and negotiating essentially and carving out this thing. And like I said, it's not just us and Mr. Lynn. It's also the PRSA that's going to get engaged in this. Because this is going to take all of us to work through. So it's going to be a process. Um, at some point, we need some letter of framework. And whatever you're going to call that. Um, it's, this was given to us by our lawyer to begin the ball rolling. Okay? Um, again, there's off ramps. There's all those things that are built in. This is just giving it because we're dealing with another entity on a potentially, and it's a complicated issue. Again, this is not something that's just, that's why it spells out a lot of these things that. That can or could be engaged in and work through. It doesn't, it's not prescriptive. It's not saying it's going to take the whole part. It's not saying it's gonna, it's just throwing out. All of these potential pieces that have to be figured out. So it's given, like I said, it's kind of giving us some guardrails, if you would, for this fact finding mission. So it's, it's again, definitely not necessary.
Yeah, uh, it feels like half of the conversation is about this document. And um, I think it would be in all of our best interest to have a clearer understanding about the difference between the letter of interest, letter of intent. An MOA and MOU and the legal parameters around that. It might give some comfort to some community members and maybe us, because I don't feel like we're doing a good job defending this document. Some of the conversations are on the land swap, but this document is the hang up for a lot of people. And I think having an attorney here in the room present, telling us what it is and is not would prevent a lot of the conjecture. That many of us that aren't familiar with those things are struggling with. And I think because there's been breaches of trust in the past with different things, adventure park or whatever. Uh, it would be advantageous to have an actual attorney talking about legal things instead of all of us.
And that, that's my.
No, and that's. I think we could have, because kept the conversation more. Uh.
Focus.
Focus. Thank you. Yeah, great word.
And, and it's great that if, and like you said, that, that the conversation is around the letter of interest. Because that's really the only thing on the table.
That shouldn't be the focus. It should be.
But that's the only thing on the table we want to do.
There's nothing binding in any of it.
But no, nobody in here is a lawyer, my understanding.
No.
And none of us are really familiar with the difference between the letter of interest, letter of intent. It could be a memorandum, memorandum of understanding or MOA.
Yeah, and I think what Jason just said of this very well, because there's a lot of semantics about what this letter is. But I think what we all should know about wherever side you're on, by having, by presenting this and saying that they're going to do whatever we want to follow. Is showing transparency. I think that was our number one issue because a lot of us didn't know what was going on because it's private property and a lot of things with the eventual part. By at least them announcing this. It, it means that as we get along the process, they're going to inform us what is going on and transparency is huge.
Yeah, yeah. And there will be, like I said, even if this moves forward, if it doesn't, it's going to go away. If it moves forward, there's going to be other, lots of other opportunities for input. This is not going to be, this is not the only time you're going to hear about it. Hopefully, I mean, if it moves forward, you'll hear about it a number of other times and there'll be other in, important feedback points. That's, that's what my administration is, wants to be about. So we're not going to try to pull some wool over your eyes or do anything about that. Because I believe in being. Community engaged and that's what this process is going to be about from beginning to end. And so this was, we'll, we'll go back, we'll, we'll get a lawyer here to explain this, this language. But again, the only point there being is. Do we investigate or don't we? You know, and that's what we'll get to at some point. Do we investigate going forward with this idea or not? But we'll get a lawyer to, to word smith and to say, this is exactly why we're needing this and all of that. Any other comments, questions? Go ahead, no.
I have one that's.
You mean?
And it's uh, not about the letter of interest or intent. So should be welcome.
This is.
Um, councilwoman Waters said, just put a, put a lid over the existing pool. Which I understand is going to be obsolete in three to five years.
That's right. Yeah.
So. I just have, this is a personal story and um.
Margot, could you identify yourself too?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Margot Hurdback. I live at ninety five fifty nine East Leavenworth Road. So I'm in the county. And I can't vote for mayor. Well anyhow, uh, we are putting in uh, what's called an endless pool at our property.
Nice.
And um, you know, it started out to be a fairly small project. But I wanted to put a lid on it. Just put a lid on it. Put a top on it. Well, by the time it got through engineering. Uh, at the county. It has to be engineered for a hundred and twenty five mile an hour. Wind. So you know, if that comes to our little hill on. It's going to blow all the roofs off the house. So uh. Just that part. Now we have to have steel, steel uprights. And um, you know, somebody said, and then you just take the top off in the summer. Well, I don't think so. Maybe you can put glass in there so you can still see the mountains. Maybe you can put glass in there so you can still see the mountains. But you know what? As soon as you get out of the water, you can see the mountains anyway.
Yeah.
I have.
So um, also, yeah, that's my what you, what's it called? Shirt but.
Oh, yes.
We have one more person online.
And I can't read. I'm sorry. You know who you are. Do you want to announce your full name to us and then you can make your comment?
I live in Poshastan. I work in Leavenworth.
And your full name is?
Terry, T E R I Miller. Yeah, most of you know me. But anyway. Tom Lynn said that, if I understand it correctly, that he will be in town tomorrow. And would be happy to meet with anyone and talk to them about his um statement that Vic, excuse me, Becky Sabido has tried to extort money from him for her campaign. And I hope that the community reaches out to Tom Lynn and see what he has to say. That's it.
And I hope the community reaches out and asks for documentation of an extortion, not simple words.
Not about that.
Let's keep the meeting about our pool. And do we have any other comments about? Okay.
Yeah. So Casey had a, you know, a little concern about losing agency. I think you keep your agency with PRSA. Cause they're going to be involved. They're, they have to be. There's no other way. And Mr. Lynn did say that there would be a board of directors. So I think that's there now. Other components to that would be in this agreement or whatever, however this he ends up. He's out. I don't know. The upside to this, for me, I look at is if it happens, if this happens, and I don't need them, we're not. Is that to build the kind of pool that would cost us eighteen million dollars. That's a lot of bonding capacity that the city shouldn't give up for. I don't care how bad you want it. It would not be in the best interest of the community, the city to give up eighteen million dollars in bonding. Number two is if somebody else is willing to build and pay the interest on it, by God, well. It's the best way to pay interest if somebody else is paying it. That would be Mr.
It will also cost less if the city is not building it.
We would have to pay prevailing wage. And so I know there's a lot of fear. We have a lot of questions. We have to ask those questions. We can't do it without having some sort of document that says, ask the questions.
Yeah.
Do you know what? Get an arm wrestle over that. And if we don't like them, great, we asked them, they get an answer. Let's move on. We'll do something else. See what happens. We got to start somewhere. This is a great start. I love this. I mean, I I've only seen this many people here one other time. And that was when they were going to do the nano tunnels or the tunnels way out. Yeah. Yeah, exactly. And that turned out to go, no, you know what? Yeah, but we had to look at it. We had to investigate it. There was a lot of stuff that I didn't understand. We know about stuff coming out of the universe and hitting us every day. You know what? You found out stuff. I mean, seriously, that's what it was. But let us, let us at least do our due diligence and find out. And we're also going to have questions and we're going to have doubts and we're going to have. Yeah. I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have conversations when I get home. And it's just going to be ongoing. But let us find out. If we end up with a great pool that benefits everybody, the the city has to be the greater benefit here.
Yeah.
And that's our goal. Yeah.
We're in this for the community. We're not in it for others. There's no advantage to us.
So I was just going to suggest that the more misunderstandings to like, to keep those at bay is the more the city keeps on top of it on their social media and then they post that in the Leavenworth. Just any updates or within the weeks are, and then have a bigger release space that starts to.
So let me, let me comment on that because we've actually been told not to post from the city. Okay. There cities are under a whole different, governments are under a whole different layer of requirements and dealing with things and issues and disclosures and all kinds of stuff that individual and private don't have to worry about. And we've been, our legal attorney, believe me, I've been to multiple city meetings. We, you know, dealing with all this stuff. And they just said, don't go there. You post on your own website. You post your own, you get your own information out. You don't engage or answer on anything else. So I it, our hands are kind of tied in a lot of ways that yours aren't. But it, it makes us also targets.
Carl, could I piggyback off of that for just a second? Just because we have so many friends here. If I saw the posts today online and I so wanted to jump in with my perspective and write comments, but as city council people, if you're wondering why you don't see those, it's because it could potentially be an open meetings violation. For instance, if I, if I chime in, someone says something back. Marco checks in and then then Anne and Jason, if we have four people commenting on a thread, it's an official open meeting. So if you're wondering why we're not chiming in on those threads, that's why.
And it's a no win.
Well, this is actually really good at that. She says, hey, go to the meeting.
Hey, also, if you just want to yell at the mayor, I have beer every other week or coffee every other week. And anybody's invited to come and I can get people to come. And you could come. And even if it's to yell at me.
Or me here. You guys can email me anytime. I'll meet for coffee or beer anytime. I'd way rather do that than exchanging emails with any of you. So if you want to have a meaningful dialogue with me, come talk to my face.
Prefer that. And I know you're busy. I've answered five emails about this pool thing already. So, and I get it. People don't have the time to come drink with me because it could be a long drinking. Feel free to ask.
One more. Uh, then we're going to move on. But go ahead.
Hi, I'm Robin DiMario. I live at one-one-eight Evans Street here in town. And first, I want to thank you all for all the time and effort that you've put into this. I appreciate it. Not on behalf. I want to also thank the audience and the people back here for their comments. Because it's made me think a little bit more about how I feel about this situation. I think Sharon for her comments. Because that's the way I started feeling about the situation. And I understand that you have to decide, or at least that's the proposal tonight, is to decide about this letter or not. I would, I would suggest that instead of taking the decision postponed until you have that lawyer in the room that can share the facts with you all and with us. I would also propose that the factual information be shared on the city Facebook page. No comments, no nothing else. This is the facts. This is everything that is factual. Don't answer anybody. Don't comment. Just state the facts. And with facts, that's that empowers us to be able to make our own decisions. So that's my proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Robin.
Yeah, I think, I think we are going to just settle this for one more, but. What?
Another hand.
No, that was a clap.
That was.
Very subtle difference there.
I think, I think we've, we've heard, we've had a great interchange. I think um, if we move forward, we'll get some clarification.
Motion on the floor.
We'll get a lawyer here or whatever to do that.
Just as a point of clarification, we actually do have a motion.
Okay, shall we do the same thing that we've already done once tonight?
So I could say. I retract the previous motion.
And I will reset my second. Okay.
So we're taking two steps forward and two steps back.
Or two steps back.
Yeah.
We're making progress.
They're all steps forward.
But
I think when the public takes time out of their busy schedules and spends hours with us in the evening, that is multiple steps forward. And I want to thank.
How more often? Do we have to do really controversial stuff to get you here? I mean, cause I can come up with some stuff, I'm sure.
There's someone got their hand up there.
Okay. LT?
Yeah, hi, thanks. Yeah, this is Lisa Teggen. Um, I've got two small kids with me right now. Someone to stay off camera. Um, they keep waving at uh people they know. I just wanted to say thank you again for everyone who showed up and participated in tonight. Thank you for um everyone's comments and listening. I s- I completely agree with uh with, I don't, sorry, I don't know what, Councilman Lungren. Um, we should bring an attorney or lawyer, someone who knows what legalese um means because I, from where I stand and where I work, words matter. And uh, you know, a letter of intent and a letter of interest, um at least where I stand, mean two different things. So I just wanted to emphasize, I appreciate Councilman Lungren bringing that point to the floor. And then also thank everybody for their time again. And I appreciate everyone's due diligence with taking their time out of this evening to, to be here. So thank you again.
All right, you know. We will put this to rest for now and revisit it later um and move on to reports.
Before you make a mass exit, there's a lot of good information that comes out of the reports that are not on the agenda. And I've got a couple of things that y'all might want to listen.
Okay, let Selby go first. Let Selby go first. One minute, that's all.
Today I met with Mary Monahan from the Department of Ecology and we started an application for an integrated planning grant to investigate the car wash property. If awarded, the two hundred thousand dollars can be used to do due diligence before acquiring the property, including phase one and phase two environmental site assessments and planning for Public Works Campus Expansion. Grants are due August eighth.
Thank you. So.
I met with HUD last week and discovered that we can file for a technical correction to repurpose that place for Alice Grant that Marco uh mentioned earlier that was awarded by HUD on behalf of Congresswoman Schreier. We've adapted our proposal or our request for four hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and forty dollars to be used to help mend, acquire the thirty-one units from the Marson family to preserve his affordable housing. Two hundred and eight thousand dollars for playground improvements for the old playground at uh playground at Osborne that has been deemed unsafe. And three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars for the pool project with a caveat that it could be used for either building a new indoor pool or replacement of an outdoor pool. Uh, the technical correction request was approved by Schreier's office and sent to HUD yesterday, but it will take several months for its way for it to wind its way through the chain of bureaucracy.
Rock star.
I worked with our city attorney and the Shalane County Housing Authority in the Office of Rural Farmworker Housing on a lease agreement for P two, that's the parking lot, that's a cert, the the pit. Um, which will come before the city council at your next meeting. The lease is to provide a site control to the housing authority so that they can complete due diligence and start applying for grants, which could take two to three years. The city will continue to operate its park facility and the espresso stand lease while that plays out. And for those who haven't been paying attention and haven't come to all the meetings, we've had three study sessions with the housing authority. And they would like to build on city property that we would gift to them. A mixed use project that would include two levels of parking, one level of retail and two floors of of one bedroom workforce housing apartments. Staff is working on installing cyberlock access control through city facilities. A pilot project is right here. I wish I brought my key down so I could give you a demonstration, but I forgot it. Um, and at the last meeting where we provided an update on the pool feasibility study, council asked staff to organize, organize a public forum on this topic. This has been tentatively scheduled for Tuesday, September nineteenth at the Fest Hall. And NAC Architects will be making the journey from Spokane to present the study, collect feedback and answer questions. And also I've noticed an uptick in complaints about the lack of ADA parking near our now permanently closed Front Street. We will be working with our park consultants during their parking study to up um during their parking study update to advise us as to the best location to provide ADA parking to make it the shortest accessible route to Front Street.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Nice job, Selby.
Well done, Selby. That's actual awesomeness.
So there was at at our retreat, there was talked about um about four hundred thousand dollars that were allocated for that that move um new playground area at Osborne. So is this um money that you got on top of that?
Yes, we are planning on using our ARPA funds for the playground. And then this would be, yeah, this would close that gap.
And ARPA is actually five hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Oh, that was okay. And then this.
Selby, will you remind or update us about Osborne and your conversations with DOE and cleanup?
So I am working with Department of Ecology um on asbestos abatement, seeing if they can free up some money for us to do the asbestos, the asbestos abatement of the Osborne. And again, for folks who don't talk to me on a daily basis. Um, we had a space needs assessment done for the, for City Hall and the Public Works Complex. Um, I presented this to the city council at our retreat on May nineteenth. It's a fifteen million dollar project to do the expansion that they are recommending that we do to give city staff the space we need and the library the space they want. And it was a thirty million dollar project to do the way to the Public Works Facility Campus Expansion. We have an Osborne property that's sitting there, what has a, which has a library in it already. So if you come to the block party in August, you should see some conceptual design of what it would look like to do a partial demolition at the Osborne to move the library over there and convert some of the classrooms and the gym into much needed community space.
When is the block party?
It is uh, it's twenty-fourth.
Oh, there'll be good Thursday.
Yeah, there'll be burgers and. Maybe not good.
Your city council.
Yes, served by. And mayor. Okay.
And staff.
We'll do, and staff, yeah. Sharon, we're going to go down to our other reports now, Sharon.
Okay, um, on July seventeenth, I attended the Shalane Douglas Health District meeting. The health district is currently experiencing increased permit levels and are understaffed across the environmental health team. This month they are onboarding two new employees and training new staff. They currently have a number of vacancies across the district. The health education. Where am I? In health education, they currently have a diabetes support group and a YWCA healthy cooking class. The health department has also filed a purposely, a proposing rule to implement a fruit and vegetable incentives program. This incentives program includes farmer's market and grocery store basic food incentives to allow eligible, eligible participants to receive extra benefits to purchase fruits and vegetables. Um, I attended the Osborne play equipment meeting. And uh, we're looking at and discussing many different pieces of equipment to have on the playground in particular, in particular for the two to five and five to twelve age groups. And we're searching for ideas and ways to make it possible for handicapped children to be able to participate. So that um, because they can't get their wheelchairs to go through the, um, what is it called? Windchips bar. Um, I also saw in, uh, there's kind of a thick book of playground equipment and I saw there were some things there for uh senior citizens. And so I'm thinking that maybe we should uh look into some of those things too. So if anybody has ideas for things they've seen in other playgrounds or whatever, you know, um, John Shones is the head of the Parks Department. Or let um, um, Mr. Walkholder know or or myself. Uh, and um, I wanted to mention that um, this past Sunday, I attended the Gladstone Choir performance of Sleeping Owl. Uh, they support the backpacking program uh that evening. And so it was for free um, free to go. And then there was a chance to put in some donations if you wanted to. If you've never heard that group and you want to have a great night, have you been, anybody been to Gladstone? Aren't they amazing? I mean, you'll be rocking out the whole time. You'll be, oh, it's, it's great. So if you ever have a chance to uh go see them, uh, please do so. And this is just on a per, per personal level. My little great grandson, Lucas Lionheart, who only has a half a heart, just had his fifth birthday yesterday and we are so grateful. Um, and lastly, I attended the downtown steering committee. Um, and lastly, I attended the Downtown Steering Committee with Councilmembers Clint and Zeke this morning, and Selby will be is the chair of that group. And um, I want to give a shout out again to pool manager and Command Kelly Lemons for the tremendous job she does keeping us afloat. Thank you. Thanks for listening.
Bye.
Very good. Uh, light couple of weeks for me. I've been out of town for much of the last week. I did attend, however, the Downtown Steering Committee meeting this morning. It was a good discussion. Selby, I know you already talked. Would would you like to circle around back to that?
I can.
What?
I can, or you can take it?
I'm gonna defer to you, because that's what I'd like to do. Um, when the time comes, otherwise, uh productive study session just a little bit earlier today. Check that, who's there?
I don't have a report. I've been uh taking some vacation time last month and not looking that much.
Yeah.
Uh, last week I attended the Link Transit Board Meeting. Um, we have uh our new CEO on board, Nick Covey. Uh, he was previously the Chief of Staff. Um, and the board is really excited about um everything that Nick is going to be bringing to Link Transit. Um, Richard Durak, the previous CEO, is still staying on for the next few weeks. Um, working side by side with Nick, um helping him um just just ushering him into the new position. But Nick had kind of been his right-hand man, so there's not going to be a big gap in transition here. Um, and Richard is going to be retiring um in August. So um after 21 years of service, it's gonna be sad to see Richard leave, but we're also really excited about Nick. Um, Nick is working on his 100-day plan, and um as that is evolving, um I can talk more about that in the future. Um, we had a very long, robust conversation at the board meeting regarding the second tenth ballot men- measure. Uh, that is um, that is something that was passed by the voters in 2019, and it was associated with Link Transit's Vision 2020, which was this all-encompassing plan to bring in uh more electric buses, expanded services, um which included uh later hours every day of the week, adding Sunday service, adding later Saturday service, um expanding routes and adding routes into various different communities. Adding um all sorts of other secondary services like ride-share programs and um uh some programs that are um supposed to kind of fill some gaps where we don't have normal everyday service. Um, and a lot of those pieces have been filled, um except for some uh route suspension and expansion issues due to operator issues. Um, but uh, I will say that right now, Link Transit has their biggest operator pool in training right now. Um, there are 10 new operators that are going, that are just finishing up their training, and they're going to be put on the schedule in the next couple of weeks, and then there's a whole nother group of nearly 20 new operators that are gonna start training, and they should be available to Link Transit in October. And so Link Transit is really hopeful about this new class, um these two new classes of operators in training, and once they are fully operational and able to be uh put into the schedule, Link is very hopeful that those services, some of them that had been suspended and some that had been promised but not been able to be fulfilled, uh will actually come to fruition, which is really exciting. Um, but there are a lot of things from that Vision 2020 that have already been implemented and hurt and have become really successful, and in some ways more successful than expected, and have already been expanded additionally. Um, but there, the board will be discussing again in the spring, um that uh second tenth of uh taxation um that was approved in 2019. Um, the board was taking that in two phases. Uh, the first was taken in 2020 and throughout COVID deferred the second tenth, because there was some extra federal funding during COVID that allowed uh Lake Transit to operate without taking that second tenth, but through some legislative changes here in 2023, uh we no longer are able to defer that that second tenth. Um, and so starting January 1st, Link Transit is going to have to take it, otherwise we will no longer qualify for state and federal funding um in in many ways. So um, we're gonna continue to have this conversation um in the springtime, um but at this point, uh that that uh deferral is is not gonna um exceed past the end of this year.
Right.
That's all I have.
See? Well done. Okay, so I sat down with Tom last week just to talk about the water capacity uh in the city and and uh got a really good lesson on kind of where we're at. And so from that discussion, um, I'm just gonna make a recommendation um that perhaps at a forum, we can make that presentation to the community, we can make it available, because that's pretty, I think it's kind of gives an idea of where we're at, and I think it'd be viable to get it out there. So just kind of making a just uh proposal for that, because I found her really valuable, Tom, and I think I think the rest of the public would also appreciate that, so. It's pretty straightforward. Um, I too attended the Downtown Steering Committee, and um it was a, it's a full discussion. We talked, I'm not gonna, I'll just hit the highlights, but I know Selby can cover this. Um, we talked about um renovation of the Front Street part, which means where the restrooms are, how that's gonna come, what that possible costs are and the design of it. We talked about uh dining areas in the streets of of how that might be arranged. We saw pictures from Bavaria of their core and how they are doing it over there, and actually, as has been mentioned several times, Love and Work, because it's got this design review board, is actually holding closer to Bavaria than Bavaria is, because they're getting they're getting polluted with neon signs, and yeah, all kinds of other stuff. And so that was, that was pretty fascinating. And the last thing we talked about was um the sandwich board sign issues in town. So I'll just leave it at that, and that's the end of my report. Right. Um, I attended a uh a meeting with the uh Prescribed Burn Council here, and we just uh, we got notice from the state that there's $250,000 available for people to burn their properties safely, prescribed burn. It's the most effective way to deal with, get your property um mitigated for wildfire, prevent wildfire on your property, isn't just to burn it. And that takes care of the under story enough. Usually it has to be pre-treated so that it doesn't turn into a huge fire. These um projects probably start taking place around October, when the wet season starts, that kind of thing. So that's available. There's um, if you get on their website, there's a letter of intent that you can sign. I intend to burn. Oh wait, I think it's a letter of interest, sorry. Said to throw that out there, but it's uh, it's pretty well subsidized by the state, because they realize the value of putting money ahead of wildfire instead of waiting for it to happen and then spending a lot more money. So um, they've certified a bunch of people to become burn managers locally, including myself, retired firefighter. And so those would be well-planned, well-executed burns that would just basically clear the ground and make it safe for the next five to 10 years while, you know, grew back. And the, you know, this land knows is much healthier when it burns regularly, not be burns all at once in summer. So that was fun. Um, on the 20th, I did attend the Parking Committee meeting, and we discussed our June parking update and all the meters and the sensors that are somewhat working, but could be working better. And we will be looking at aerial sensors that will look at cars and decide, are they there long? Is the space filled? And that kind of thing. And we talked about the update, Rick Williams, we're 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 above, what, halfway through or not even?
Hasn't started.
Hasn't started.
He's coming into town this summer, and he's not telling us when.
Okay.
Because that would skew the results.
Right. Hmm. So, but he is looking at data right now.
They are data collection.
That's what I meant, halfway through data collection. Okay. And that's about it. Thank you.
Great. Nothing. Lot got canceled.
Oh, we wouldn't get it back.
So I'll just mention that um briefly, that, you know, we've been dealing with river issues with the county and different ones for a number of years now, and trying to find solutions for poor use of the river and misuse, if you would, um from folks. And um we, we had a smaller, we have a large group that meets with lots of agencies and things. We boiled it down and just did the county and the city. Um, that was it, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, just the county and the city. It felt so much more productive. Um, but actually, you know, and and because, again, there's a consultant that both the county and the city are paying for, that's that's researching and coming up with ways and plans, and just, just be aware that I think what you're gonna see coming down the pipe, not too distant future, is some kind of permit system to get on our river. And that is going to be able to fund enforcement of good behavior. We can't require good behaviors without an enforcement mechanism. We all see what goes on on the river that gives gives tourists a bad name. Um, and uh, but it really looks hopeful that there'll be a system that will be in place that will generate enough for us to then be able to to start doing some of that control and that. And it's still, I mean, there's there's still too many, again, loose ends here, but it's coming to a, I think, to a river near you um in the not-too-distant future, and that we will all benefit, but we'll all have to pay a little bit for that opportunity.
Who wouldn't differentiate residents versus?
Well, here's, here's one. We, none of this is bludgeoned out, but one idea is you pay us a small fee, and that's for the season. So what it does is, it's very doable for residents, because you can use it the whole season. Tourists basically will use it a weekend or use it a, you know, so they're gonna again, carry the biggest brunt. But again, uh, my feeling is, I'll pay a little bit if it means we get better control of it and more issue. And then instead of dealing with just strictly numbers, what we'll look at is, for instance, the icicle is at some point the water flow and temperature issues that will determine when that stops. And then things shift generally then onto the Winachi and doing that. But rather than controlling numbers, it's enforcement that is going to be the first focus, rather than just strictly trying to put a quota on it. But um anyway, uh again, it was the most hopeful kind of progress and conversations, and I think everybody, and some of the issues, again, um overconsumption of alcohol. Um, and here was an interesting idea that came up is simply part of the enforcement and all the things is, you only get to bring non-single-use containers. So that is a, an alcohol limiting than if you could bring all of your 24-packs and whatever. It's gotta be in reusable containers will will do that. Um, and that's, again, has been done elsewhere and with some success, because, again, pollution is one of the issues we fight. You know, the plastics are one of the issues, and ongoing, but. Robin?
Isn't it also addressed, the parking issue?
Yeah, and the parking issues are are also, I mean, one of the things is, again, providing more shuttle into those places and and doing that, and some, some closer, parking is difficult, because parking takes space, and where people want to put in is not a lot of space. So that's gonna be, that's, that's a trickier one, but it is, it is still being addressed, and it is going to be, and and the county is looking at enforcing no parking along the road, which, again, forces people maybe to to use shuttles and doing that, but on the icicle.
I just need you to say that again.
Uh, the, the county is actually looking at beginning to enforce. That's a huge leap, and it is, and we've, we've gone back and forth and around in circles with them over, you know, a lot of, but anyway. I don't, you know, I probably have said way too much, but um, but there are things coming, and I think it'll help us all. Um, but we'll all pay a little bit, maybe, but the tourism, again, is gonna drive most of that, and then we'll get some good enforcement, because we'll have people on the water enforcement. And the sheriffs will pay for sheriff time, so that they've got enforcement, you know, ability. So, you know, very horrible. And that's, that's my blue one. Selby?
I think Zeke did a great job downtown steering committee.
Okay, get it down.
I've, I've had an eventful day, not only week, so we've been two days, but the annual audit, biennial audit at this point, is almost nearing completion, so be aware. Once they finish all their work back at their office, they're no longer posting up here, disrupting the rest of us over the last five weeks that they've been on site. Hopefully they'll have their exit intro- or exit interview scheduled for you shortly. Uh, PRSA contacted me today from the SAO and wanted to do their audit, so I started in on the agency's audit for the PRSA as well, and Brandy will be helping me with that. Good news was, as soon as I sent in the first couple of responses today, his immediate response back was, your annual report was perfect, and all your documentation looked great. We're good for now. I'll get back to you. So I think that one's a lot easier. And the third most uh exciting one for me, because I've had it on hold while I had all these audits happening, is I got to finally jump into ClearGov regarding our digital budget book process, and started cutting and pasting and putting it together and morphing it, and it's really exciting to see how it's gonna look at the end. So I'm hoping I'll have that uh for you before we even start about just biennial modification budgeting stuff that happens in October of this year. Um, my goal is to actually wrap it up and hopefully have it live for you by the end of August. And in your motion this earlier for the consent agenda, if you didn't notice, there is your semi-annual transportation benefit district mid-year funding update and history report. So there's twelve and a half years of data there of where the last $18 million we've spent on streets has gone. Uh, 30% of that is grants, and about 50% of that comes from retail sales taxes. So we, we should be very proud that a lot of our streets that are being improved, and I know it doesn't look like a lot very fast, but they are expensive. It is a lot being paid for by our tourists as well. And on a final note, you have your finance report in the packet, so if you have any questions for me on that, let me know.
Thanks, Shantel.
Huh?
Oh, you may have a question.
Well, uh? I was gonna let her go last, because she's at the end of the house. Go ahead, love.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, council members. Um, our department, um, I can honestly say we're swimming with Maggie gone. Um, but we do have three job postings. I did talk with a temp agency, and I have talked with a professional um consulting, planning consulting firm about bringing on a planner or two to handle some of the permits that are coming through. Um, we did authorize a grading permit for a spa facility. Um, and that's behind the Link property, which is also, it's also behind the potential Bouldering Gym, and Bouldering Gym has their site development application in as well. The hotel has their site development application in. And they have just, uh, will be finishing their comment period at the end of this week, and I expect them to start moving earth next month. So you'll see that depending on any final comments, although archaeology got back and said they had no concerns, and ecology just had some general cut-and-paste type comments. Any case, so those projects are all, all starting to roll. Um, and we're doing our best to keep that moving. I'm looking forward to having some temp support come on as well. If you have any questions, um, I do have a council member who has a question to me right now. I'm gonna be following up with that tomorrow. Do feel free to email me. Email is the best way to get ahold of me um as I continue to uh balance a little bit of uh life, work, stuff. That's gonna be going on um longer than I anticipated, but I am happy to communicate with you, and if you need something, uh, please reach out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, members of the community. Good evening. I will go quick. I want to welcome Steve Webel to the crew. He's at one of our seven-month seasonal's on the Parks Division. Our Parks Division is officially fully staffed, first time in two years, so. That's awesome. Our utility division recruitment is going well. We have five applicants for an open position. As Christian did indicate, we As Christian did indicate, we are struggling to fill our water treatment plant operator supervisor rather position because that requires a group three certification. There is a nationwide shortage of water plant operators. So we're not alone there. But we're continuing to negotiate with Department of Health on a succession plan that they'll vie off on to allow us to operate the plant. Uh, shout out to Rick Emmons and his team, the utility maintenance, excuse me, the utilities division for clearing a sewer blockage last week at Eagle Drive. Uh, that's a cumbersome system because that's a combined sewer, storm sewer, combined sewer and storm water in one system. So when there's a sewer backup, it doesn't surface. So it just overflows in stormwater. Uh, that was a discharge was reported to Department of Ecology. This Eagle Drive sidewalk project is starting next month in August. I do not have an exact start date. I do know the roundabout, Link's roundabout at Iceville Road and US two is also going to start early August. So those projects will likely start around the same time. Just a general note, I wrote with Jason O'Brien on Sunday, our weekend garbage collection person and uh. The the cardboard contamination in downtown core is extremely high and Mickelson's actually is putting us on notice. If we continue to have co- high contamination rates in our cardboard, they will, they will not allow us to dump our cardboard. So we're gonna issue a letter to the downtown counts just to inform them that cardboard contamination is a big deal. And if we are not allowed to dump at Mickelson's, we have to pay for it to be disposed of in the landfill, which is not ideal. Our first bear proof ninety-six gallon tote was deployed three fifteen commercial street. So we officially have our first ninety-six gallon Kodiak. Tow in service. And last but not least, preliminary wastewater treatment plant capacity analysis findings. I got word just via email um that there are no immediate capacity concerns with anything at a wastewater plant. We'll get the final results and know kind of what our short term issues are and how impactful they are there. They are. So basically. Despite of our recent upgrades, there's no immediate concern and that's what we wanted identified, but we do need to know what our living factors are, which we'll find out soon. That concludes my report. Thank you.
What is cardboard contamination?
There's trash.
Oh, in, oh, okay. I thought the cardboard.
Which is difficult. I mean, it's in the downtown core. I mean, anyone could drive down there and throw whatever they want in the cans. So. It's kind of self policing.
Like they might have to be locked.
Well, then we would, that'd be an operational burden on us. We have our crew had to lock them. That's a, it's balancing hands.
All right. I would entertain a motion to.
I make a motion.
No, Marco wants to stay.